Please stand.
We're ready to have a meeting.
October 27th, 2015, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is now in session.
Morning. Join me in prayer, please. Father, thank you again for a wonderful day. Lord, thank you for this rain you've given us. Really appreciate it. Good to help with the dust and maybe settle things down. Lord, we ask that you bless this board today. Bless the people of Gulf County. Bless the people who've come before this board. All sitting down, we'll all leave here. Lord, as always, be with our armed services, our military people. Always be with our law enforcement. All the law enforcement officers that put their lives on the line daily protect us. Be with them and bless them. And in closing, Lord, bless this board. Bless the great county of Gulf, the state of Florida, and the United States of America. Call on your precious name. Join me, if you would, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, okay. This time, we recall the regular meeting, October 27th, the regular meeting of Gulf County Board of County Commissioners to order. Before we begin, I want to take just a brief moment to welcome to the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners a gentleman that is no stranger to this board. A gentleman that will be representing District 5 in Gulf County. That's the Honorable Commissioner Jerry Barnes. Would you all give him my hand and welcome him? Jerry, welcome so much. Thank you. Quick announcement. This morning, beginning at, Alex, what time?
Starting at 11:00.
At 11 o'clock at the Port St. Joe Fire Station at 42 Williams Avenue. I think I'm correct on that. Representative Gwen Graham, our United States Congressperson, will have a representative there, Mr. Alex Quintana, to answer any questions. If you would like to go by and meet with Alex, you have any concerns for the representative, then he's going to try to get her to come down some of our meetings. Secondly, this Thursday, the 29th, United States Senator Phil Nelson will have a representative, same location, the fire station at Port St. Joe, 42 Williams Avenue, starting at the beginning at 10 o'clock. So if any of you have any questions for the United States Senator, please feel free to come out and meet with his representative. Okay, having said, we've got that. Again, welcome to the October 27th regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. Always, if anyone in the audience, if you're not on the agenda, there will be a portion at the end of the public discussion. Anyone in the audience that has any concerns before the board, you will be recognized and you will be given time to come before the board and make your presentation. So just keep that and bear with us. We're going to try to move along as quickly as possible. All right, at this time, we're going to address the consent agenda. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? No one in the audience? We will turn now to our staff members. Does any of the staff members have any concerns or any questions with the consent agenda? Having none, we will turn to the board. Does any board members have any questions or concern with the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Michael Moore.
Mr. Chairman, I do.
All right.
It's just a clarification on pages 34 to 36 in the public notice for the MSTU.
34 to 36. All right, we will address that. Commissioner, when we get into item number four, board business, pages 34, I've got a note here, and 36.
Very good. So we'll pull those.
Any more, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, may I just clarify? So we're pulling those pages?
Do what now?
Are we pulling those pages, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we're going to pull 34 through 36 right now to address when we get into board now. I need a motion to, you have, Commissioner? All right, is that all, Commissioner Barnes? Okay, thank you. I'll need a motion to accept consent agenda excluding pages 34 through 36, which will be addressed in board discussion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Quinn.
And a second.
Have a second by Commissioner Michael Moore. Is any other for board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? No one? There's no opposition? The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, board. This time, we'll direct our attention over to the county administrator, Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler, you now have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple items I need to wait, probably an hour on one. A union representative from Mobile is coming over, having an impasse issue on the agenda.
Which is that on the agenda? Would it be number seven?
I think so. That'd be probably around 10 o'clock.
Okay. So noted.
My first item on my list is, Mr. Chairman, you had called, you had asked me to make contact with DOT. Get representatives down to meet concerning the sidewalk on St. Joe Beach, from St. Joe Beach to Mexico Beach. And we did. I have the first item on my list. And during that meeting, between yourself, myself, and the attorney, Mr. Hammond, and three DOT officials, we discussed the issues at hand, and we think we probably worked out a solution to. And Mr. Attorney put in a form of resolution for the board to consider. But I just want to lay it on the table and let the attorney read the resolution that we had agreed to at the table with DOT last week.
Pending board approval. Now, do you want the attorney to read the?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Attorney.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have a resolution that was drawn up following that meeting and my discussion with Mr. Butler. I can read it by title, or I can just hand, provide you each a copy of it as well.
Please.
I'll give you all a moment to receive a copy. Commissioners, I'll read it by title for the public. It's a resolution of Gulf County Board of County Commission requesting the Florida Department of Transportation's acknowledgment, cooperation, and assistance to Gulf County in its requested modification of St. Joe Beach Highway Sidewalk Project, requesting Florida Department of Transportation to approve, accept, and support these modifications, and accepting responsibility for same to make necessary amendments to the grant award and project planning. The crux of the whereas clauses and the three findings in here are a result of that meeting with those DOT officials that Mr. Butler referenced. It reads as follows, the whereas the Department of Transportation has ongoing road improvement projects and grant funding being utilized through the state of Florida for the enhancement of its roadways, pedestrian paths, and infrastructure. And whereas the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners has applied for the appropriate grant award for the St. Joe Beach Sidewalk Project, supported the DOT's initial planning and coordination efforts to implement this project for St. Joe Beach. And whereas this commission, following public discussion, public information provided by the DOT and their public meetings and the receipt of Gulf County's constituents' comment and input, has requested additional input and consideration of the DOT officials and the final planning for the sidewalk and its implementation. Whereas the St. Joe Beach Sidewalk was intended on the DOT's transportation initiatives and connectivity goals to connect the beach community with pedestrian sidewalk and enhance the public safety through this project. And whereas the commission has expressed and deemed appropriate to recommend that the DOT with the present grant award funding, current timeline, and numerous logistical issues for crossing US Highway 98 toward the northernmost section of the planned path adjacent to Beacon Hill, has met with DOT officials to explore alternate efforts to complete the project. And whereas this commission, in light of the property issues raised in the meetings with the DOT officials regarding the private property along the suggested sidewalk path in the limited state right-of-way at specific points in the sidewalk's planned route, support the modification of the grant award and plan to terminate the current sidewalk at Abalone Street at Beacon Hill on St. Joe Beach. And whereas this commission has reviewed the information and planned sidewalk plans from DOT in consideration of its support for these modifications, which would remove a planned crosswalk from the project with the terminus at Abalone, and therefore requested DOT officials consider the natural resources damages assessment, otherwise known as NERTA, fishing pier project being completed by the Florida Department of Protection at the Windmark Beach public access on the southernmost end of the sidewalk project that can be connected via alternate substitute crosswalk and minimal sidewalk extension to the abandoned US Highway 98 pedestrian path and new county fishing pier. Now therefore be resolved the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners in regular session of October 27th as follows. The Board of County Commissioners hereby resolve to support the DOT officials' modification of the current St. Joe Beach sidewalk to terminate at Abalone in Beacon Hill at St. Joe Beach as the current most ideal and appropriate use of public funds for the original stated policies and purpose of the grant award in light of the property rights and right-of-way issues discussed. Two, be it further resolved the commission has evaluated the grant award and proposed plan for the numerous crosswalks along USI 98, and request the DOT officials consider the alternate crosswalk at or near the termination point of the sidewalk on Pine Street to cross over Highway 98 and extend to the new Gulf County fishing pier to be constructed across the Windmark Public Beach Access, as well as connectivity to an additional approximate five miles of pedestrian pathways and trails. And three, be it further resolved a copy of this fully adopted resolution from the Gulf County be furnished to the DOT for introduction, review, acceptance of the request for modification and support. And it's proposed for this adoption on October 27th, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That was, that was a result of the meeting we had DOT. Issue at hand was when you get past Organot, the right-of-way is so narrow. If they go to the beachside, they're going to impede parking on the right-of-way on the beachside for those houses that were built prior to regulations. And on the land side of the road, starting at Organot, the chain of fences, probably Allen Edge, the right-of-way, and the two big white houses further down that same block or close, or maybe over the edge of the right-of-way. So it's problematic, something that we don't want to take off the table, something we want to get done at some point in time. But to solve this problem with the people being able to park, you can't park on the sidewalk. It's not lawful to park on the sidewalk, and it's going to hinder the parking. So what this would do, and this would, if they were to take, agree with us on this, they would run the sidewalk back towards Windmark to the old Highway 98, for that connectivity between Old 98 and St. Joe Beach, for the board's consideration.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Butler. All right. Members? Sir, Mr. Butler? You have a motion? Mr. Chairman, the staff, they did exactly what we asked them to do. Go back and research this. I think they've come up with a good solution. I don't have a problem with it. I'll put the motion on the table, that we accept their proposal. Thank you. Mr. Michael Moore? Motion by Commissioner Michael Moore, second by Commissioner Barnes. Any further board discussion?
Yeah, I do have a discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The chair recognizes Commissioner Brian.
Well, first of all, I'm going to state the obvious, that every person in this room knows that I'm going to state. And that is that this resolution was placed before us, as you saw, moments before we are to vote on it. It is not placed before the public. The sidewalk project is something that went through a complete and required public process by the DOT. The people in the public believe that it's going forward with the way the DOT presented it. I think it's very interesting that our county attorney and county administrator, and Mr. Chairman, I know that you were in this meeting with the DOT, although it's been played out at this morning, as if you were being briefed on the meeting that the staff had. So I know you were fully aware of this. Of course, I was not informed of this DOT meeting. Now, I will say that I completely understand the issues that this part of the sidewalk has, from Abalone to the Bay County line. And it is something we need to address. And I know we have people here today that have concerns about those issues. And they need to be addressed prior to any sidewalk being installed in that area. This is not the solution. This is people who were not elected by the people of District 3 coming up with a radical solution to completely terminate the sidewalk from Abalone to the county line without any feedback from the community. Now, I've spoken with people who have issues with the way the sidewalk is laid out now, and they're not necessarily in favor of abandoning it. They just want the issues addressed. And these issues can be addressed through working with the DOT in a collegial way and not in a heavy-handed way. So I want to appeal to this board to not take this heavy-handed direction in terminating that sidewalk. And there's a lot of people in the community that would like to be able to travel over to Mexico Beach. And even though it's not Gulf County, there is shopping and restaurants, and hooking up the sidewalk is appealing to the people in the community. Now, the issue of coming up with this new portion of the project from Pine Street down to the Windmark Beach path, the Windmark has a path that is an intertwining path for pedestrians and for bicycles. That path is not completed to the end of Windmark. There is old roadbed from Highway 98. It is, the DOT has not checked to see who owns the roadbed. As most people know, I used to work for the St. Joe Company. I left their employ in 2008. I worked on that project. The St. Joe Company own the old roadbed. You can't just hook up without dealing with St. Joe. And that is a big company to deal with. So what you are asking DOT to do may not be able to be done. And my experience with DOT, I'm pretty certain that they're not going to add this new part of the project to our sidewalk project. It's one thing to drop parts of the project, but it's another thing to have to go out and do engineering and add a section. So I was elected by the people who this project affects, and nobody in the staff felt that it was necessary to talk to me. And Mr. Chairman, you felt that it was necessary to get involved in this. I'm asking you to, let's do notify DOT. Let's notify DOT that we are not happy with the current map of the sidewalk. I am willing to work with DOT, and they are willing to work with us to find a solution. At least, they haven't, I'll back that up, they haven't committed to that. But my indications are that they are willing to find a good solution if we work together. And I know what the issues are with the folks from our community, and I'm happy to work with them. And I understand that they have very good points that they have raised. But to just scrap this project is wrong. And it does not really affect you, Mr. Chairman. And you need to think about that. But the people that it does affect, they haven't been able to weigh in. They attended the public meeting. They think it's going forward with the way that it was presented to them. This is why there's requirements for public meetings, because it's their business. It's not our business. We're just doing it on their behalf. So I am going to ask this board to, and I'm going to ask you, Commissioner, if you would consider amending your motion, that we send something to the DOT to ask them to hold off on putting in that sidewalk and work on the issues that we have before they go forward, prior to just scrapping it.
And we'll give you an answer. Okay? And I've already stated it. The staff has worked on this. That's what we directed them to do. They met with DOT. They came up with a compromise or whatever that I'm good with, and I'm ready to move forward with this, Mr. Chairman. All right. Need to call for the vote. Do this, let's move on. Let me respond to her questions and the facts to the people. The fact that the reason I got involved with it, because people tried to make contact with you, Commissioner, couldn't, you wouldn't return their calls.
That is not true.
Well, no, I didn't interrupt while you was talking. I said it very patiently.
I didn't state any lies.
Patiently, no, you just hold it. I have the floor. Now, I sat right here at three meetings and said, I want some answers. We started with this, modified to this, and then it was changed to that. I said, I want them to come right here. Now, I went through the proper procedure. We sent a letter there requesting. You met with those people, and the staff or the attorney knew nothing about it. You met with DOT.
I did not meet with them. I did not meet with them. I never laid eyes on them until they were here to meet with you, and I ran into them in the parking lot.
Wait a minute now. Wait a minute. Hold it, hold it, hold it. Now, the truth's coming out, and things get more twisted around. You just hold it. We called for the meeting to come down. I wanted to know my questions. I'll put it right up here if you want it up here. I can have Ms. Lanier put it right up here. We want to know why. We sat down, and guess what? They opened our eyes to some things, and we opened their eyes to some things. And we sat there and talked. You should have been the one that was in there, but no, you met, you never once let the administration know that you were talking with these people. And there's no reason for these people to lie, because I asked a question. I said, you know how I got in this? I don't represent that district. But people out there called me because they couldn't get, make contact with their representative. The commissioner represents that. I went through the proper procedure. I keep my hands up here. We sent them a letter on official county stationary, set up the meeting, myself, the attorney, Mr. Butler, and the grant writer. I don't see her here this morning. We met with Mr. Peters, Padoo, Mr. Fowler, and we had a good meeting, a good meeting. As I said prior, and if you would listen in the resolution, it says that extending the sidewalk on to 386 is not off the table. It's not off the table. We're going to look at it, because they're going to go around and put this second phase of the bypass behind St. Joe Beach, which will take a little pressure off of 98. So no, it hasn't been taken off of you. Laugh whatever you want to. It don't bother me.
Stop laughing.
But I'm just telling you the facts. I got involved because you didn't.
Well, and, no, I'm going to answer to that. I'm going to answer to that if I have to go stand at that podium during the public time, because I'm going to answer what you just laid out there, Mr. Chairman. And I want to make it clear that I'll talk to anybody I want to talk to.
You can.
And I have spoken with the DOT. No, now I'm talking. I have the floor.
No, I'm the chair. Now, listen to me.
You are not the dictator. This is.
But I am the chair.
Oh, there is a system of government that, you need to go back to civics class.
Call for the vote, Mr. Chairman. I call them for the vote.
Now, I'm going to clarify the lies that you laid out. I did not meet with DOT until I.
You spoke with DOT. Why would they say that? I asked that very question.
Why don't you just let me finish?
Well, no, I'm telling the truth on here.
I spoke with DOT on the phone.
Never met with these people.
I called DOT after I heard from Mr. Pridgen. I didn't hear from Mr. Lanier. You mentioned Mr. Lanier. Mr. Lanier never tried to contact me about this project. So I don't, I don't know if you are saying that I did, he wasn't able to reach me. He never called me. I did speak with Mr. Pridgen, and I was.
And did you speak with Mr. Pridgen?
I spoke with Mr. Pridgen on the phone, and I spoke with him at this meeting. I don't remember the dates, but I called.
A month ago? Two months ago?
Listen, you.
Oh, I'm trying to get the timeline here.
You will not interrupt me either. I am elected by the people of this county. You know why I got elected? Because of people like you. They elected something different, because they're sick of this kind of garbage.
I think we've heard enough of this. I've heard enough.
I contacted DOT to discuss the issues that Mr. Pridgen has.
Have a motion on the floor.
I was working with DOT in a collegial way, not in a heavy-handed way. And you are bulldozing the people of District 3, just like you did with the variance across the street from the county park. And they got screwed. Excuse my language, but they did.
Commissioner, I'm going to call for a recess here if you don't.
You called for a recess.
Be quiet.
I mean, you know, if you want.
You must be quiet. I'm calling for order here.
Did you see the judge's order that indicated that you cut me off when I was trying to raise the issues? You need to learn what your place is. You run this meeting, you don't run this county.
I call for the vote.
You better call for public comment. You know, that's the rules.
You let me run this meeting. Is there any, or we go to votes, any other discussion here? Anyone in the audience on this? One, two, three. Young lady, come up. Do what? Oh, yeah.
Jennifer Corbin, 86, 22 West Highway 98. I'm excited about the highway project. I'm concerned that it stops at Abalone. I did a hot lap up and down between Abalone and Lookout Lounge this morning, just to make sure I understood. Yes, sir?
You need to get, you have, have you got the?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Anna.
Okay.
Go ahead. You were doing a hot lap.
Yeah, I was doing a hot lap, just to make sure that I understood, you know, the area that was, was up for debate. And truly, I mean, as a former planner in my career, I see a solution. But when I hear that, you know, you're not taking it off the table, you know, at some future date, we can deal with this section, Beacon Hill is still waiting for the sewer project that was not taken off the table, and it's been years. So whenever somebody says, oh, we're just going to parking lot that for a bit, it means that there isn't going to be any action in the near future. So waiting for that whole highway project back behind St. Joe to be the next opportunity for us to deal with that section means we are not going to deal with this for years and years and years. My concern is the folks of Beacon Hill, and that's a very populated area up and down that section. We want a sidewalk. We deserve a sidewalk. And I would just please beg the board, you know, to continue the discussion now, so that we can have that continuity with Bay County and Mexico Beach in our lifetime. You know, it's just important for the quality of life for the people of that area that we get some amenities that will make it a more enjoyable place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbin. We can fix this project.
Can I have a young lady over here, or a gentleman? Come on over on this side, raise their hand.
Yeah, I've got, I've got six minutes at the end. Is it out of, would I waste it now, or do I have both opportunities? It's about this topic.
Yeah. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, the policy doesn't forfeit his time to public speak later on. If he wants to speak on the issue now, he has those three minutes under the county policy.
But now?
He can speak.
He's on the agenda.
And he can speak now on the issue if he elects to do so under the policy.
Come up.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Yeah, good evening. Randy Pridgen, 9223, Highway 98. And I thought it was going to be a good meeting coming down here, and six minutes later, it will be a good meeting. I promise the board that.
Okay, thank you.
Walking up and down, I do appreciate your, I walk there every day, I mean, every weekend. I've been walking it for 46 years, and I am a walker. But I also know that when dealing with other entities, state entities who I worked for a while, sometimes they don't get it right. But I'll talk more about in my six, next six minutes, how y'all did get it right. I want to commend the staff. I want to commend you, Commissioner, for doing this. This was, this was, you got it right. With BP money coming up and stuff like that, we're going to revisit this type of, I'm sure it will be better. We're talking about another highway going back there. I would definitely think that waiting and seeing and get it right the first time versus putting it in front of a house where you can't park. You've all been there. Thank you, Michael, for walking that and looking at that. I mean, we can't even park our vehicles there. I asked Lynn, Lynn, I didn't know you couldn't, I couldn't tell you what I was talking about. I wanted to show you that. I got some pictures. If you put a vehicle in front of these houses, it's just ours, because we go there all the time. There are a lot of property owners there that are out of town. They're in Georgia, Tennessee. They were going to come back from Tennessee and see a house that they couldn't park at. I promise you that. So when we talk about how much the public knew about it, they didn't. There are 19 properties on that side that it would affect. And there's only two or three that had, they had none of it, because we go down there all the time. The rest of them are rentals and stuff like that, or they don't get down there as much. So when you say you didn't hear from them, probably because they weren't in town, and they didn't know it. I looked at, no, 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 finish.
And that's not what I said. I just said that.
Commissioner?
I didn't not respond.
Commissioner, please.
Not correct information.
Gentlemen here has the floor.
You know, I've about had it with you.
Ma'am?
If you want, I'll take you to court personally, Mr. Chairman. And you and I can fight it out. This doesn't have anything to do with you.
Chairman, Randy told me a long time ago to take the high road. Chairman, Randy told me a long time ago to take the high road, I'm going to take it right now, okay? I'm going to take, my grandfather was tax collector in this, we grew up in this area. I'll take the high road, and I will take the high road. I'll talk to you in six, my six minutes at the end about this, okay?
I'm sorry for interrupting, Mr. Pridgen, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, you got it right. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
And I, and I have...
Commissioner, just please, we've got, we've got people here that want to...
This is a project in my district, Mr. Chairman, and my point is we are trying to resolve these issues, and we need to work with DOT to resolve, make Mr. Pridgen happy. I understand his issues, and he brought up issues that don't even have to do with his property that are serious issues. But I want us to work around those issues, not scrap the project. That's the point. And, you know, it's the administrator and the attorney's responsibility to work with me. They will not contact me, they will not inform me of these issues. It's not my place to go ask them. They should be informing me of what's going on in my district that you're meeting with DOT.
Mr. Chairman, you call for the vote, or I'm going home.
And there's other people in the audience that want to...
I got to rank one more gentleman over here. When I went to public comment, I've got one more before he comes up. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman?
This is totally unlawful.
Yeah, it's a, it's a half hour in, I just wanted to, I know you all adopted the policy a few months back, but I'm, I'm happy to revisit it if you'd like me to for the benefit of the entire board. With regards to, comments addressed to the chair, all discussion shall be made through the chairman. One member may not interrogate another member or a person speaking from the public except through the chairman. The order of discussion shall be designated by the chairman. Rules are from the chair, and you direct and designate who speaks at each time. And I bring that up, Mr. Chairman, I have the policy, I'm happy to provide it to each of you as you move forward through this debate.
We all have it. Now, thank you, sir. You want to speak?
Welcome to Venezuela.
Good morning. Noel Guardi, 311 Bonnet Street, I'm in Beacon Hill. And I don't understand why, again, the residents of Beacon Hill at large have to suffer because of the objections of one property owner. It seems to me that, that there's two sides of that highway where a path can be built, it, it should be built. It's, 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 I'm a cyclist, and for me to have to brave the shoulder of Highway 98 is, it, it's to get, to get to Mexico Beach or have to go round in the back there on other roads, it's not right. I mean, we should, it, the project is not of a piece if you don't have that section. The purpose of it is to allow the cyclists and pedestrians and golf carters to have access to the front, the beachfront there. And to leave that section out really undermines the benefit of that project for Beacon Hill, for, for sure. I, I live there. I, I don't understand why we would have a departure from the due process to change, to alter this project. That doesn't make any sense to me, I'm an attorney, I've been an attorney for 38 years. I went to the hearing with Judge Hanson. Judge Hanson didn't say that you guys were observing due process. He said you weren't observing due process, but your failure to provide proper notice to the public. Your attorney, because he was your defense attorney, yeah, he has a, he has skin in that game to say the judge said it was all right. The judge did not say it was all right. The judge, Judge Hanson said, "This board does not follow the due process requirements of the 14th Amendment." And I, for one, object to having Beacon Hill made a second-class beach, and I object to the lack of due process here as a citizen. And if I have to take any action, whatever that is, I will. I'm perfectly capable of litigating the issue. I really think that you need to follow the law. This is, this is a rule-of-law country, it's a rule-of-law state and a rule-of-law county, but I don't see that. That's my comments.
Thank you, sir. Motion on the floor? Have a second? Support this resolution to DOT.
I have, I have another comment.
You've already spoken, Commissioner, you've already spoken. Now, we have a speaking policy, you have a copy of it, you've had your turn, each member on this board has had a turn.
Listen, I, I am asking for us, we can, we can resolve Mr. Pridgen's issues. I am asking for time. If you tell the DOT to abandon, they'll abandon. They don't, they're not going to force a sidewalk on this county. Give us time to work it through, that's what I was trying to do. And yes, I did call DOT after I talked with Mr. Pridgen and was working through those issues, but it takes time. These are legal issues, you don't understand that. These are issues having to do with easements and property rights, and that takes time. So, that's all I'm asking for this board to do, not to put the sidewalk through as it is, but to ask the DOT to hold off so that we can work through the issues, we can make Mr. Pridgen and his issues happy. And it's not just really his issues, he, they're, the issues that he represents would affect other people, and, and they are serious issues. We need to address those problems with the sidewalk, but I believe that we can get this sidewalk done, so why not get it done?
Commissioner, and this is it? We're going to vote just as soon as I get through with this. Had your turn. For three meetings, I ask.
And we've been working on it.
Commissioner, please, you didn't want to speak up and say, "Let me take the lead on this, let me take it." No, you had met with those people, and, you know, I go through the proper procedures through the channel. But anyway...
You don't listen to anything I say, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner, Quinn, how do you vote? I vote for it, let's move forward. Vote for Mr. Macklemore? Vote for Commissioner Bryan?
No.
No. Commissioner Barnes? R, and the chair votes for, motion passes four to one. Mr. Butler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item I have is going to be the impasse issue with Mr. Stevenson from Mobile. He'll be here about 10 o'clock, if he's not already here, would, if you can, when he comes in, they'll let us know. That's all I have at the time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney, you have anything for the board this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First item I have is with regards to the memorandum that you have in your packet. It's a memo from your supervisor of elections, Mr. Hanlon. I know Mr. Gene McCrone's here today. He had submitted a memo in your information packet with regards to the good news they have to report with regards to funding that comes from HAVA and the state MOA with regards to paying for the county's polling machines. There is a proposal and a request from the supervisor of elections to fund those over a five-year period for small rural counties in Florida. The supervisors worked successfully with the state, with some other supervisors, to find that funding. I believe the total cost to the county would have been in excess of $120,000 between the polling machines and the servers. The county supervisor elections and Mr. McCrone have worked through those issues. They've provided with, me with the MOA from the state as well as the financing agreement that had been proposed by a national finance company. The financing agreement is, violates the Florida Constitution and various statutory chapters, and with that being in front of the supervisors, they've explored other ways to pay for this. Some of your sister counties have explored independent financing from local banks, and as an alternative in that memo that you read in your information packet from the supervisor, he's also explored and proposed to you that they pull that, that the commission find the ability to pull that from your reserves and then pay it back on a five-year basis as the money comes in from the state. We've worked through the purchase agreement with the vendor and also have indicated to them that this is contingent on the state continuing to fund this over the five-year period. So, I don't know if Mr. McCrone has anything else he wants to add to that, but we'd ask for the county's direction with regards to how they want to pay for these polling machines, permitting the supervisor to go out to advertise to borrow the money, roughly $120,000 through public advertisement, or alternatively, find the funding from your reserves and notify the supervisor so he can purchase the equipment. Under your Voting Rights Act and the regulations that are coming up, the supervisors indicated, I think in the next three years, that these polling machines would be mandatory for Gulf County, and this gives the county the ability to pay for it through this HAVA grant from the state.
All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. I'm going to ask Gene to come up, but, and shed some light on this. Gene, will you come up on this issue? Because I've worked with your office, or with Mr. Hanlon and with you, the fact that they wanted to try to get these machines in for this 2016 election, and there was some, they would help with some of the financing of it, and especially with the small counties. So, if you would, Gene, give your name over here and who you represent, and see if you can give us a quick briefing on this, please.
Representing John Hanlon, supervisor of elections. Earlier this year, Secretary of State Detzner made a statement that said most of the small counties' equipment were aging past their useful life, and he had concerns about us entering the presidential primary year with old equipment. So, what, what happened was 12 counties, small counties got together and formed a consortium and approached the Division of Elections and the secretary, and then the, we all used the same vendor. And they agreed that we could upgrade our equipment, and they would use Help America Vote Act funds to, to help finance this. And over five years, they would reimburse each of the counties the monies that we paid out, or we would pass through to the vendor to pay for this. And this is how we came about into this, and we've been working with Jeremy because we had some issues with the purchase agreements that first came out. And what has happened is, we've worked through it multiple times, we've had multiple additions of the agreement, and nothing worked quite right. So, we're now asking the county if they could reach into reserves and, and give us the money. It's about $118,000, $172,000 is what it is.
How much?
And the state will reimburse us at $23,634,40 per year over the next five years, starting with this fiscal year, as soon as we sign the paperwork and give the agreements in place.
And that'll give us our money back.
That'll give us our money back.
Okay, all right. Just hold, hold just a minute. Recognize a commissioner. Commissioner Macklemore?
Yes, sir. Do we have that in writing from the state now that they're going to give us that money each, each year?
Yes.
Is that a done deal?
That was one of the issues, Commissioner. It's a done deal for the coming fiscal year. That HAVA grant is going to be funded for the next five years. So, the language you've put in the memorandum of agreement with the state is, "We'll continue to pay for these machines so long as the state approves this in their fiscal budget." Now, they've approved the plan for five years for all these counties to pay for them. Beyond this next fiscal year, you have new legislature, they may alternate in their, their budgeting, but right now, they've all committed for the next five years to all these supervisors that they'll pay for it on a five-year plan. And that was one of the hangups in the MOAs, we need a commitment from the state.
And we have three years until the deadline's up.
We, we need to have in place, for 2020, we need to do it in 2019 to put the machines into place. To get it in early, they were willing to give us the money if we would do it earlier. So, we're trying to give them this.
Otherwise, we got to foot the bill.
We'll have to foot the bill in 2019 if we don't do it now.
One of the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, you have.
One of the issues that Mr. Hanlon, Mr. McCrone, and we were working with is, each year that they fund it is approximately $25,000 less the county's going to have to foot the bill. The county was looking at this purchase for $120,000 of equipment. The states obligated themselves, so each year that we go down this line, if four years into this plan that we have 100,000 of the 120, and the state does something such as an unfunded mandate, which they're known to do in the past, then we'll have this issue to deal with on a $25,000 bill. But each year that the state gives us this money, it'll knock off what the county's obligation
Butler, let me direct a question at you and maybe over to Mrs., the clerk of the court who has the checkbook. We have money available in this matter, or any contingency that we can, we had and implement this?
Commissioner Barnes, I talked yesterday, we looked at the budget, we have, got $1,178,000 in reserve for contingency, got a couple hundred thousand dollars in reserve for infrastructure you could take out of either one of those two.
Gene, what you're saying, we either got to do it now, or we are going to have to do it in 2019.
That's correct. And now, concerning now, we're, we're pretty much funding the mandate, but in, in 2019 it will be an unfunded mandate.
Oh, be on the taxpayers of Gulf County.
Things changed though a lot in three or four years now, fellas.
I do understand, but, you know, they would not guarantee the money to us in, in the future, that's what they told us.
Gene, thank you, you've answered our question here.
When you dip into those reserves, going backwards, I can tell you.
A loan?
All right.
A interest loan.
Yeah, something. I, I'd rather do a loan than I had jump into our reserves. And, and I'm not the financial advisor. Mr. Butler, this is your department, what's your recommendation on this?
I saw, I saw the recommendation going into reserve for contingency. We've been out of that reserve several years now, but dipped into it. You do have an infrastructure reserve you could dip into, and what we do, we'll back off on any purchase, probably a vehicle purchase, but we can do it.
I was going to say, and we have a lot of other needs too that needs to be done out in the county.
We got to cough up the 118 right up front, and then they will reimburse us hopefully the, all of it back.
Hopefully.
Oh, we'll get one year.
Him and I, I'm sorry, I'm not for this. If, if they need the money, go do a, a low-interest loan. I, I'm not, I'm not for dipping into our reserves for this project. We have three to four years ahead, there's a loss that can happen in three or four years. That's where I'm at.
Any other commissioner?
We, we could potentially, I don't know how the timing works out, but we could potentially inquire about what type of a loan and at what interest rate we could get, and then weigh, if that makes sense, if timing allows.
Or we could budget for this project each year. Each year, we're in budget for it. I'm sorry, that's the way I feel.
I, I think we need to take advantage of the opportunity, but the question is how do we take advantage of that opportunity?
Now, get on board for the 2016. Originally, ladies and gentlemen, dealing with Mr. Hanlon, it was, wasn't going to cost anything, but he never could get a signature. He said, "I'm waiting on the signature." Never could get a signature from the state, saying that they would foot the whole bill. I think some of the larger counties said, "Well, if you're going to do it for the small ones, you got to do it for us too." So, I don't know there, I'm just, when I don't live, I'm saying that. Now then, they've tossed it back to us, it's like everything else. We get mandates, but we got, you got to pay for it. Amazing, it's amazing how they can dictate to you. You have to absorb the monetary expense of it.
Mr. Chairman, sometimes, sometimes you have...
Yes, all right, I'll recognize you.
Sometimes you have to stand up to the state.
Not always right, but it's held a state.
They're not sitting here in this little small county trying to keep our taxes low and, and take care of our people. But sometimes you have to shove it back on them, and I'm shoving it back on this project.
Mr. Attorney, do you have any, any eye on this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I know that Gene, Mr. McCrone and Mr. Hanlon have been successfully working on this for almost close to two years. This is a plan, I can, as I mentioned, some of your other counties have already signed up for, they've negotiated more competitive rates that they're direct purchasing versus financing through a company out of Nebraska, which had been initially offered by the vendor. So, they're, they're competitive prices on the machines, and you have other counties that have signed up. Time is of the essence, and like I said, they've been working on this for close to two years. With regards to the state, they have been working to try to come up with a creative solution where they're going to fund this. So, the plan is in place, the funding is earmarked, and each year we'll presumably pay down whatever debt service you create as a result of this for the next five years.
All right, board members? Odeon machines? Anyone else?
We know we're going to have to get them. We know that, do something now rather than wait and pay $119,000 at the end of the four years, whatever, so. Like, Commissioner Macklemore, I hate to go into the reserves, but we got a reserve for infrastructures, $100,000, we can go in that, and we won't have to pay any interest. We getting 20, we know we're going to get 23,000 of it.
I agree with Commissioner Barnes. And I hate to go dip into it, but like I say, if the state comes through, then we're going to get, we're going to get the money back every year. Commissioner Mclemore brings up a great point, state might back out of it. But, uh, I, I, I would rather, I hate for us to be paying interest on the loan. I think we should just go ahead and move forth and just dip into reserves and let's go and pay the hundred and twenty thousand.
But anyone else? All right, the chair will entertain a motion on this subject, a motion to proceed or not to proceed with the state plan that Mr. uh, McCrone has presented. Go ahead and, uh, purchase and let the state pay us back.
I make that motion.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Quinn.
I second.
The second by Commissioner Barnes. Any further board discussion? But anyone in the audience on the voting machine issue? Want any opposition?
Yes.
Have one opposed. Motion pass, four to one. All right, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, next issue, at your last meeting on twenty-second September, uh, there was a discussion towards the end of the meeting with regards to your current solid waste services. Uh, following that discussion, there was an amended motion to ask me to go back and review the contract with regards to the default terms of the contract and the performance of the vendor. Um, I reviewed that, um, I have a timeline for each of the Commissioners, uh, to take you through it, to, uh, follow along as I, uh, review the default. Commissioners, as that's being passed down, um, what I try to do is summarize the packet that you have in front of you with just one sheet, which is a timeline, uh, starting back in, well, just start on January, uh, twenty-eighth of 2014. Uh, we were required to provide notice to our past hauler and collector, uh, with regards to our intent to negotiate. At the last meeting, I had mentioned that we had gone through about a five-month process with regards to creating a joint committee between your two cities here in Gulf County and the county staff. Uh, you provide us, the staff, a directive as to what are the specifications and measurables that you'd like to find in a responsive bid from a hauler. Um, the timeline takes you from January twenty-eighth, um, up until March sixth, um, I apologize, from February twenty-sixth, when that committee first met. They met subsequently to that for about three months, um, with city officials from, uh, Weewaw and St. Joe and county staff. Uh, we came up with a bid specs, which was thirteen fourteen dash fifteen, um, and the, uh, it was advertised. There was a pre-bid conference with, uh, qualified or interested bidders. There were three that attended that meeting in April of 2014. Subsequent to that, you received your bids. You had a special county commission meeting in which the recommendations and the review of that committee to the responsive bidders was presented, and this county commission voted to accept, uh, the proposal of Waste Pro of Florida Incorporated, um, and authorized and instructed staff to negotiate a contract to be signed prior to the termination of your prior, uh, company's services on May thirty-first of that year. Uh, that contract was signed on May twenty-ninth with Waste Pro USA. Um, in terms of that contract and the discussions at your last meeting, there was discussion with regards to the paving of the road at the Five Points landfill site, as well as the construction and completion of the transfer station. Both of those terms and those construction were negotiated, um, and were the only, Waste Pro was the only responsive bidder that indicated that they would complete both of those as a requirement of the county's contract and specs. Uh, those were to be completed by December thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen. Um, as we approached the end of last year, the county staff and the commission acknowledged that those proj, that project was not completed, and the county commission instructed staff and myself to send notice to the vendor as to an inquiry, also as to a notice of a breach of the contract for failure to complete both of those, in addition to some other more minor issues with their services. In that packet that you have in front of you, under number one, you'll see exactly that letter that was sent to them on January fourteenth of two thousand and fifteen via certified mail to their corporate council, as well as the president of their Florida company, noting each of the deficiencies and the breaches in their contract pursuant to the contract that we had provided to them to sign back in May of fourteen. Uh, following that, there was correspondence back and forth, there was a request of the Waste Pro council to toll the breach period so that the parties could come back to the table and review the contract and their deficiencies and work out a, uh, resolution, which is also called for by the contract. Uh, the contract, I believe, is about thirty-five pages, so I didn't, uh, put that in your packet as well, but I'm certainly happy to provide it to you all. In review, per the commission's instructions at the last meeting with regards to default, um, we've reviewed, uh, sections seven or paragraph seven of the contract with regards to default and notice of breach. On January fourteenth of this year, we notified them of those areas that they, we feel has had breached in their contract. On February, um, first of two thousand and fifteen this year, we reached an addendum to the contract following the county commission's approval. Uh, we provided a summary to the county at the end of January with regards to the two leases for the sites, one, the five-acre site, which where they're currently building their transfer station, and the second, a temporary lease of our scale house facility so they can operate their transfer station operations until they finish the transfer station. Both of those leases were executed, as well as the addendum to the contract. The addendum in the contract, we also noted all the breach and liquidated damages provisions, and, uh, the parties agreed to a daily fine to Waste Pro from January first until the present date today. Uh, currently, the county has received over thirty-six thousand dollars from the, from Waste Pro and liquidated damages for the failure to complete the transfer station, as well as the failure to complete the, uh, road paving into the new transfer facility. In addition to that, they worked through their permitting issues. The contract that we wrote with them under exhibit seven spoke to the acreage that we would provide to Waste Pro for the completion of the transfer station facility. Upon providing them the meets and bounds, um, through our GIS, they took those five acres and began to file for permitting, which they ran into significant issues towards the conclusion of two thousand and fourteen, which they notified county staff of in December. Um, since then, they've worked with their professionals, um, have engaged local engineering as well to work through those permitting issues, and were successful in resolving them this summer. Um, they've commenced with their construction of the transfer facility, and all the while, we have, through the clerk's office, submitted a quarterly bill for liquidated damages for their failure to comply with the contract, uh, up until today. We received in the packet, which you'll find also, um, the copies of each of those payments to the county clerk's office and our notice and invoice sent to them back in August and October. In addition to that, under number four, you'll see the October eighth notice asking for a summary and an update of where they are at with the completion of the transfers facility. You'll see under number five, which is a letter from their corporate council on October fifteenth, providing us with an update and a status as to the completion of the facility. And then number six is an updated construction schedule we received from the, uh, vendor with regards to the transfer facility and a projected punch list and approval inspection date of, of, uh, December seventeenth through December thirtieth of this year. In my review and your instru- instructions, I have, um, reviewed the history and the, uh, chronology of the contract. They have performed under the terms of the contract and have agreed to the addendum provisions. Um, with regards to a material breach, the contract's written in such a way that when you run into issues such as what we have, we provided them with a specific five acres, they ran into delays for the permitting, um, they have worked through those issues, and as of last week, on site, um, I believe they've raised the elevation of the property per the permit, poured the foundation, and are moving forward and hope to have it done in the next month and a half. I'd be happy to answer any other questions the commission has, but I believe this provides a thorough summary of where they're at and where we are with the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
I have, I have a question, what you just, Mr. Novak, you just said.
You recognize.
Hope to have it done. Could you tell me what they hope to have done by the, did you say the end of the month? I just didn't catch that last thing.
Sure. The construction of the transfer facility and, and, and providing them with a punch list for final approval, one of the terms of the contract is when they finish the transfer facility, they have to provide the county officials notice, the county does a walkthrough. The contract's written in such a way that in five years, seven years, nine years, or eleven years, the county has the opportunity to purchase this for the market value of the building after they provide us the costs. The county has the right to inspect it upon completion, and they've indicated to us December seventeenth is a projected completion date for the transfer facility.
Of the facility.
The paving of the road, as I've mentioned previously in meetings, and you've heard from your administrator, we are balancing, the county is balancing both the completion of that road, the closing of the Five Points landfill, and also the transfer facility. Um, right now, I think it's projected you have four hundred loads of fill coming into your landfill site, um, along the unimproved road. So at this time, for that to be paved would only be, um, a disadvantage to the county and its residents to have a paved road than to have county trucks drive across it with four hundred loads. So at this time, it's not timely for it to be completed. They don't plan on having it completed until after the transfer facility's done, and the longer they're down the road, it's more beneficial to the county to inherit that road.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not finished.
Is that all, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
All right, now, back over here.
Uh, and I would like to say that the, the road should be constructed in such a way that it can handle those trucks. Their roads can be constructed to handle trucks that travel across them, do it all the time. Sometimes you avoid putting the, the last skin of asphalt on a road if you've got a lot of construction going on, just so that the road still looks nice, like in a residential community that's being built. But that road should be constructed to be able to, um, withstand trucks being driven across it. But, so, do I understand you correctly, Mr. Novak, to say that you reviewed section seven of the contract and, um, you do not agree that Waste Pro is in default or in breach? You mentioned that's the section that you reviewed, which is the default section in the contract.
No, Commissioner, I have indicated in my letter of January fourteenth that they are in breach of the contract.
Okay, um, but what about continuing breach? I mean, this was in January, we're now in October.
Yes.
And this continuing breach?
Yes, that's correct.
So you're, you, so you are advising this board that Waste Pro is in breach, continuing in breach?
Have been since January first of two thousand and fifteen. And it has been addressed by the attorney for Waste Pro in our county. The county commission provided us authorization to move forward to address those breaches, and that's being remedied on a daily basis by virtue of the contract that was written with them.
So what is your position in, in declaring them in default?
They're meeting the terms of the contract under the breach and liquidated damages. And I direct the commission to section eleven of the contract, I believe, which is liquidated damages. I apologize. It's actually under seven as well. It speaks to liquidated damages, and under section, section six H, it says, "Delay in completion of transfer station construction and permitting operations." And there's a liquidated damages amount per day that is not operational. So the contract specifically contemplated, and that's the purpose of liquidated damages in the beginning, in the whereas clause, it states neither side can put a value to projected costs. The county right now is not paying anything for them to be operating this transfer facility out of a temporary site. So in terms of damages, for us to argue, and I've discussed it at the last meeting, the county to come forward for, for elements of the complaint would be, one is damages. What are the damages to the county right now? We addressed it in the contract. We all agreed, the county commission, to the value per day for not having the road and the transfer facility done. They are in breach. We've dealt with that breach. We put them on notice through certified mail. We worked through the issue, we've identified it, and the parties agreed through the addendum to the contract that they would pay. So it's being dealt with through the contract. If it was outside the scope of the contract or they failed to pay, then there would be a reason to send a default notice, and they'd have an opportunity to cure. If they didn't cure, then the county could take action.
Well, well, in fact, you know, I would disagree with you. The liquidated damages are, are in place of damages that cannot be defined, but the fact that they have not built the transfer station, that's a six, under the contract is estimated at a six-hundred-thousand-dollar project, so thirty-three thousand dollars in liquidated damages is a drop in the bucket. If the contract were to terminate and we entered into this contract that they would be building this, um, facility, it has not been built. So the liquidated damages doesn't, it's not a way to buy off being in default, but we, you know, that's an argument for another place, uh, legal argument that two people disagree on. However, you know, we are here representing the people of Gulf County, and, you know, I just want to make sure that things are done correctly. And, um, I know that we've got some folks from Waste Pro here, and, um, we, I'm continuing to have some issues, uh, that Mr., um, sorry, that Commissioner Quinn brought up at a prior meeting with the liquids coming out of the trucks. And, um, we also, I'm receiving some complaints that the cans are not being fully emptied. And the past two weeks in my district, we have had our, our garbage picked up a day late, which is an issue because of the bears. So if, if we need to change our pickup date, then that's what we need to know. But it, it was two weeks in a row that our, um, pickup was a day late. These are things that need to be addressed. It's, so now, it's being said that this transfer station will be built on the seventeenth. It's estimated to be completed on the seventeenth.
That's the last I heard from the officials from Waste Pro. Um, I was out there with the administrator last week. Um, they've raised the elevation of the five acres, um, they've put the foundation and the footers in, um, so from our visual inspection, and I'm certainly not an expert in that area, but it appears as though the project's moving along. Um, with regards to the other issues, Commissioner, the one that was brought up at the last meeting by Commissioner Quinn, um, the day after that last meeting, I believe Waste Pro officials came and met with the administrator, indicated they would immediately address the, um, liquids coming from the trucks. Um, we followed up with them on that about two weeks ago. They've welded and sealed those trucks and have addressed those issues. They indicated they had a hydraulics issue with one of those trucks, which is not a leakage from the truck, but a hydraulic fluid, um, that they had remedied. With regards to your other issues, those are new, they're here, hopefully they'll address them. Um, with regards to complaints, the contract also speaks to complaints from the community in terms of timing, pickups, cans. The contract speaks to all of that under six H as well, and there's fines from thirty dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day that are documented, that are addressed by the administrator, um, and they go from one to four, five to nine, five to ten, twenty and up, and the increases in terms of damages to, uh, Waste Pro. So if we document them, provide them to them, there's contractual provisions that address those as well, and we'll be happy to do that.
And I do see that in that same list that you're referring to, Mr. Novak, that there are, um, liquidated damages for, for providing collection services outside the designated times without administrator approval, um, at a hundred dollars per incident. And, um, you know, this is something that would have to be looked at if we continue to have the trash picked up late. And it becomes an issue because people have to go out and chase down their trash or pick up their neighbor's trash, because the bear doesn't just keep it right there, you know, he takes it all over the neighborhood. And, and I would just also like to say that, um, this is a twenty-six-page document that, that you've handed out, and there, there's no way that, I'm sorry, uh, there's no way that any of us could review this at this time. So in the future, I, again, I, I will reiterate that I would like to receive these items prior to the meeting, so I can give it thoughtful review.
I am, Ms. Chairman. All right, Mr. Bryan, are you yielding back? I recognize you.
Just one quick comment.
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Bryan, let me, let me tell you how to handle this.
Um, okay.
If I can, I'll give you some suggestions, 'cause it worked for me. Three months ago, I was having all kind of problems. Hands being picked up late, not being picked up, the whole nine yards. Mr. Payne calls me once a week nowadays, just to see if I have any issues. And for the last three months, I've had no issues. But my point is, work with him, I promise you, he will take care of it, because he took care of my problem, and I appreciate it. I knew, I know you know, in the audience back there now, but I have no issue that I know of in District One. And I had plenty, trust me.
Just want to echo, uh, a couple of things, uh, 'cause I brought that issue up last month, and, uh, I appreciate Mr. uh, Mr. Attorney and, uh, county administrator jumping on it, and I appreciate Waste Pro for getting it done. I hadn't had no issues, uh, since we, uh, we talked at that meeting. Uh, and also, I had, I, I have Mr. Norm on speed dial. If I have any issues, I know how to contact him for Waste Pro, and he always, uh, he always get the job done. So, um, I, I appreciate what y'all did, and I appreciate Waste Pro stepping up for and taking care of, uh, the leakage. Uh, hadn't had any issues, so, uh, I appreciate that.
Attorney, we'll go back to you.
Go ahead, sir.
Eddie, thank you. Mr. Hammond, anything? Ms. Sumner? Thank you. Larry?
Nothing right now.
Thank you, sir. Cuthbert?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
We've identified another area of the county, uh, up in the five-acre farm area, had, uh, some drainage issues across this private property. We've already reached out to the property owners, it affects four property owners. We can go down and, and cut, maintain ditches that will relieve some water, watershed off the south end of the five-acre farms to an outfall ditch.
Everything goes to the west, I think I'm right, or to the south and west there.
South and the west. That's right. We, we've reached out, we've already got them to sign, we just need, uh, I need authorization to get, um, Mr. Butler to sign them.
Mr. Cuthbert, make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's is crossed on these when we're dealing with, in issues of this nature.
Uh, Sumner, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Second.
Motion, got a second. Any further board discussion? Do you want any audience in discussion on this? Not any opposition? Motion pass five and oh.
That's all, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cuthbert? Mr. Chairman, I have one of my issues that affects Mr. Cuthbert, if I could bring it up.
Sure, sure you can.
Um, Mr. Cuthbert's been working on the agreement with Deseret to access the drainage ditches that are on their property, and, um, he's coming to a completion on that, so that's a good thing, he's worked very hard on it. Um, we also need a, um, limited maintenance agreement or some type of agreement to access their property for the Gulf Air ditch, and, um, it's traveling across association property. So he has, um, Mr. Cuthbert has informed me that they need, um, an agreement with the association just to travel across the property to get, to the Deseret property to get to the ditch. So I'd like to make a motion that, um, we allow him to execute that agreement, or the administrator to.
Move forward with the project.
Execute the agreement, yes.
Got a motion, Mike. Commissioner Bryan?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mclemore. Second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any concerns on it? No one? Any opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, sir.
Joe, we got two Joes here. Joe and Joe. Come on up.
Mr. Paul? Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to start out by saying guilty as charged. You have four items in front of you that I was not able to get into the consent agenda. Item number one is the state's fiscal year annual report 1314 closeout for ship.
Hey, we got it right here.
This report actually had to be closed out a year early. That's according to the way the legislature wrote the grant last, when they did it in 1314. I actually presented to you the interim report for review the last time we did this. This closeout has to be done and submitted to them by 30 October. You'll notice in the report, if you notice in the page there, that there is actually zero money carried forward, because this money is required to be expended totally this year, or we have to return it to them. You'll also notice that there's $59,000 encumbered not spent. I'll speak to part of that encumbrment here in a few minutes with another project I have, which will take almost $40,000 of that. The other $19,000 is encumbered, because I am anticipating some change orders in projects that were approved at the last meeting. I would appreciate a vote to accept this report and to sign the certification, that the chairman signed the certification attached, so that I can transmit this to Florida Housing before 30 October.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, a move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Macklemore?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barnes. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any concerns on these documents? No opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Number two on your list is a change order number two for Ms. Olivia Daniels, 137 Robbins Avenue. We were nearing completion of this project. When we got to the end of the project, removing the vanity for repair in her bathroom showed floor deterioration. If you notice, the change order requires the repair of the bathroom floor, installing floor covering, and also, when they were taking the vanity out, they discovered defects in the faucet, which required replacing the vanity and installing new handicap faucets. This change order amount is listed for, the actual change order is $1,025. By the time we do the mortgage modification, the total amount of the change order is $1,347.87. I need a motion to approve the change order, at which time we will have the chairman and the contractor sign the change order.
Well, we have a motion by Commissioner Barnes?
Second.
Here, a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Change order. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any concerns? If not, no opposition? Motion passed five and oh for the change order. Next.
Thank you. Number three is, we had actually a new bid go out for a new project. This is part of the 1314 funds expenditure that I'd indicated to in the closeout report. That is for a Mr. Pete Taunton. We opened the bids yesterday morning at 10 o'clock. You have the bid tabulation sheets attached. It is my recommendation that the commission approve the authority for us to award the bid to Crest Enterprises, who was low bidder on this project.
Given, would you name the three?
Certainly, sir.
And the monetary amount for each?
Certainly, sir. The first bid was from Gulf Devay Development. Their base bid was $54,576.05. Crest Enterprises, $38,248.50. Raymond Drysback LLC, $47,480.
You recommended best.
Yes, sir. The billing official, myself, reviewed the bids yesterday to make sure they were in compliance, and we recommend awarding the bid to the low bidder, Crest Enterprises.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Here, second by Commissioner Bryan. Any further board discussion? Awarding this bid? Want in the audience, any concerns? No concerns? Any opposition? If not, motion passed five and oh.
Last one, Mr. Commissioner, and thank you for allowing me to do this. You'll see this one in front of you. If you'll notice, the email that was sent to me actually yesterday at 11:58 a.m. This particular email was apparently forwarded to the people at Community, Christian Community Development. We are entertaining to do a project at 116 Apollo Street, repairing the roof on the house of Ms. Calvin, Ms. Christine B. Calvin. In checking this, we found out that she had a current ship loan in effect, which was done in 2007. If you'll read in the email, it says that her roof was inspected by Mr. Rodney Hall Roofing, and it was in severe repair, and she needs the roof really badly. You also see on here where it talks about she needs to have her bathroom repaired and handicap tub installed. That is not entertained to be done actually by ship. That will be done through the grant that Christian Community Development has to do that. We will only be doing the roof on the house. However, in order to do that, we have to forgive the loan that she had previously, which actually pays out in June 2017. Her original loan amount in June 2007 was $16,500. That requires a 10-year payout. The current balance, estimated balance on her loan right now is $2,800. If we agree to forgive this, we can forgive and go forward and do her a roof, or you can agree not to forgive it, at which time we will wait until it does pay out for her to entertain a roof.
This is at Apollo Street?
116 Apollo Street, Mr. Chairman.
What's your suggestion, Mr. Paul?
I really feel like the lady needs the roof. I've communicated with her. We were ready to do the roof, and of course, you know, things like this come up as I get deeper into the file. Maybe I should check this first and not fourth or fifth to prolong getting this done. But when I did see it, the only way to do it is to, for us, forgive this under the hardship program, which I believe, Ms. Attorney, is that not correct? If we forgive it under the hardship, we accept her hardship, then we can actually move forward. She honestly does need the roof. I've been out to the house to check it with the people from Christian Community Development, and Mr. Rodney Hall actually came to my office to tell me, which usually he just kind of drops things off and runs, but he did spend a minute to tell me that it did need repair. Everything else on her application is in order. She is in the low-income category, which qualifies her for the assistance if we forgive the loan.
All right. Couple more questions.
Sure.
Is she an elderly lady?
Yes.
Does she live by herself?
Yes. In the email, it does say she now lives by herself.
Okay. So move to move forward. Right. We have a motion on the floor to forgive under the hardship. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any concerns over this? If not, if there's no opposition, motion passed five and oh to forgive under the hardship. Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your indulgence.
Mr. Whitfield, you're next.
Well, I'd like to thank the board for buying us an ambulance. We have got one under purchase now. We should be getting it in two to three weeks. They put the stripe in on it for us. It wound up being a 2014 demonstrator, $139,539, which is discounting about 17,000 to 20,000. Second item is, our collections in September was $52,975, which is down a little bit from the other months. This is due to the building company changing their software, so it should show up on this coming month, the balance of what we did have then. Our budget's going to be winding up for 14, 15, sometime this month. Next board meeting, I'll present you how we stand overall for the year of last year, once they've closed that budget out. The other item I have is several months ago, we put out the bid, building contractor. We received several bids. Only one bid met the criteria we put out, which was EMS consultants are bitter we now have in contract. And we negotiated back with him, and we have a rate down to 4.5%, which is initially 5%. So at this time, I wish to get your permission to go ahead and piggyback on the contract we have them, with them in 2008, for the 4.5% fee for doing our collections.
Question. Sure. And this is in your budget? Is this money in your budget? Is this coming here?
The billing?
The billing come.
The billing comes. Now, we have a budget line item in our account for X amount of money. If we collect $100,000 more than what we think we're going to collect, it's going to increase in our budget, but we brought that money in. In other words, I'd like to see that line item go in the red big time, but.
Okay, yes, so move. Mr. Chairman. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. I hear a second to go with this billing company. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any other board discussions? I have one. Mr. Whitfield, the 4.5% comes off of the collection fees.
Right.
There you go. I just want to clear. All right, anyone in the audience, any concerns over this, going with this billing or collecting agency? No opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jenkins?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just three quick items for information I wanted to address. As we all know, we're having a really bad year with Red Tide. We started speaking almost weekly with FWC around the 22nd of September. My team and with Public Works and the work crew have been out there a total of six times now, primarily on Saint Joe Beach, Windmark, and the peninsula part of the Cape. I will say that on the 15th, and with working with Mr. Butler and Public Works, we had to hire our cleaning company to come out, and on Saint Joe Beach and Windmark, they removed 15 tons of fish. And we worked with DEP and disposed of it properly. We have another call with FWC on Wednesday. They've done a great job in engaging the coastal counties and the state and local environmental services companies in keeping us posted. We've had the highest concentration of the algae this year, us now, and it's down in Sarasota. Hopefully, this rain and wind will, you know, appease it, but we've done a really good job, and even the work crews have done tremendous. They're out there, and it's not a fun task to do, and with it affecting eyes and people's health. But we did, most of the people that came into the Welcome Center, that called or came, they were, and we had a very busy fall break here, and we didn't have very many complaints. Everybody understood you can't fight Mother Nature, but I wanted to update you on the Red Tide.
Good.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you to everybody pulled together and worked so hard cleaning those fish off the beach, and as they're picking them up, there's just more coming in, and they really did do a great job.
They really did. That was a tremendous, and they did that in seven hours. 15 tons in seven hours. Second, I wanted to let you know, I got a call the first week in October, that the, years ago, the county applied for NERTA grant for seagrass recovery. DEP combined those projects with St. Andrews, St. Joseph Bay, and Apalachicola Bay, and the first week in October, they installed a buoy system in the bay. There were 39 total permits, I believe, and they went in and they put an adjustable rising buoy that goes up and down with the tide that lets boaters know when they're coming up upon shallow water and the seagrass beds. So as soon as I get the complete and final report on that, that was totally done through DEP.
Question. What's the language on the buoys?
I didn't bring it with me, Commissioner. I'll get it for you. I looked at it beforehand. They called me the day that they started putting them in. I didn't even know that they were going out to do that. I will get you proper pictures for that.
Need to check it.
Yes, I will. Okay. And finally, I just want to let you know, the TDC's annual meeting is next Tuesday, November 3rd, from 5 to 7, at the Capital City Bank Building, and anybody's welcome to come. Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins, again, I want to follow up with Commissioner Bryan here. I want to thank you and your people. I want to thank the Florida Department of Health. They were involved with it. Mr. Marshall Nelson back with our EOC, Mr. Cawthon, and especially the county administrator. He kept me posted, and we were back and forth. I'd make recommendations. He would call Tallahassee and get a response, and Tallahassee called St. Petersburg, and St. Petersburg would call Tallahassee back. No one over there wanted to take the bull, they were saying the bull by the horn, but we got the job done. And last, but the people on Saint Joe Beach, well, all of our Gulf beaches, they understand this from years to years. Sometimes you have a mild year, sometimes you have a heavy year. We had one, and for their patience and their understanding for the people there. And it's gone next, hopefully, we don't have it next year, but if we do, we'll address it.
Well, and two, I just would like to say, Mr. Chairman, we went through the proper procedures every time we did a cleanup, to go through the Fish Kill Hotline and be sure that we're communicating appropriately, so the county should.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie? Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Lanier? Have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items that came in after the agenda was out. The first is a request from the Weewall Elementary School Gator Football League. They are having their annual 2015 football and cheerleading banquet, and they have asked that we waive the fee at Honeyville Community Center for that event on November the 10th.
All right. Question? Question. We do this every year, don't we? Is this something we do every year?
Every year.
Every year. Oh, Lord, I just swore we're getting beat at, but anyway, so move. Getting beat. So move. All right, motion by Commissioner Macklemore. I hear a second for this waiver. Got a second by Commissioner Barnes. Any further board discussion? Any concerns, discussion from the audience? No opposition? Motion passed five and oh for the waiver.
Mr. Chairman, my only other item is, we've received amendment number four to our agreement with Florida Fish and Wildlife, and this amendment is to strictly extend the period of agreement for this grant.
How long?
And remain in effect until June 30th of 2016, and this is for our HCP.
What's that? Just for the audience?
Our Habitat Conservation Plan.
There you go. All right, got a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Not any opposition? If no opposition, motion passed five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Ms. Rhonda, good morning to you, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Do you have anything for the board today? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, I have nothing.
Thank you. Roberts? Yeah?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you.
Well, I'm happy with sure doing good. We all doing good.
All right. Yeah, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, that completes our county staff business. This time, we're moving to board business. Any business for the board? Commissioner Quinn, we will start with you, sir.
Yes, sir. Just one thing I need to pass on to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I received a letter in the mail from Chemical Addiction Recovery Effort, and they're asking that you appoint a board member on their board. So I'm going to take this and pass it along to you.
All right. Gladly. Well, way to properly do this. We're volunteers, I believe in that. We have a board member that would love to volunteer to settle on this.
I'll volunteer, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. It works with the children, and Quinn is in the, is in our school system, does a marvelous job. Quinn, you're it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Macklemore?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Macklemore?
I do have one item I want to bring out to the board and discuss it with y'all a little bit. I was approached by Tommy Ward, who owns 13 Mile Seafood down there. He's working the program out with the state. They're actually going to school for it. But, long story short, what he's doing is a pilot program, excuse me, on harvesting oysters. And what he's doing, he's putting them in baskets and growing them off in baskets, and blah, blah, blah. Anyway, what he's needing from the state, and this is something I've got to talk with Jeremy about or whatever, but I wanted to bring it up. What they're interested in doing is leasing out one acre of the Indian Lagoon up there, which I'm well familiar with that, and, and most of us are. But anyway, I don't have a, I, I don't have an issue with it. I don't see where it, it will affect the public any. You know, he's not going in there and leasing an oyster bar that's already established. He's needing new water. And he's needing this board's approval before he can move forward with this project. So I, I just want to throw this out there to the board, let you be thinking about it. I don't want to take any action on it today, you know, but this is something that, you know, I think we need to look at, you know, with, especially, we, we need to work with the, with Ward down there anyway, for the shelling, shelling project that hopefully is coming out of BP funds, you know, to re-nourish the Indian Lagoon. So, so, you know, they're asking for an acre, kind of a pilot program deal. So I just want to lay that out there to the commissioners and see what you think about it.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I do. I do. About to forget. It's, uh, it's that time again for chairmanship. In one year, it don't seem like it. Almost it will be in, in January. But anyway, we're at the time that we need to, we need to do something. Mr. McDaniel's chair, I'm by his chair. And like that now for what, two years? Couple of years or whatever? To be honest with you, I don't have a problem with it like it is. I'm one of those that if something's not broke, don't try to fix it. I don't think our chairmanship is broke. Uh, I would motion to leave it just like it is. If the other commissioners have an issue with it, then we need to discuss it.
Mr. Chairman?
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, no longer than I've been on the board, I have realized the chairman does a lot. He goes to meeting, or she goes to the meetings. I've been, uh, by some of the things I've read and talking to people.
Go make a motion.
Made a motion.
Made a motion, a second. Barnes, any further board discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to state that this is my fourth year in office, and we are supposed to be, I mean, it's not required, but it's traditional to rotate the chairmanship. And I would like to have an opportunity to serve as the chairman in my four-year term. So I'm gonna just go ahead and put that out there, that I would like to have that opportunity.
Like the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I can, if I can ask the commission to include in your motion or to amend it, your policy states when to do it each year. If you can, just to note in your motion, you'll suspend the policy and the date. You guys have it in your, for that to be the second meeting of November. I believe, Mr. Chairman, you indicated that, I believe that's a FAC conference. But if there's a, if you can include in your motion to suspend the current county policy in order to carry out the motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll put that into my motion. Everything you say.
Thank you. And this is, doesn't go to the public, this is internal board issue. Any opposition to the motion?
I oppose. So this doesn't go for public comment?
No, this is internal between us. The public don't choose the board members. The positions of the, motion pass four to one.
Ladies and gentlemen, truly, it's an honor, but let me say, you've got to do this job. You've got to be available 24/7. I'm at this building right here, meeting with these people just about every day, sometime multiple times. I'm right over here with the clerk's office, as saying what the chair is required. It is a full-time, full-time job. Thank the board for the work. I've tried to be fair and with everyone here and forward to it. Going, we've got a lot coming up. Store act. Have a lot going on with EDC. We have a lot going on with TDC. We have a lot going on with the port. There's just a lot going on, and you have to be in a position. I'm retired, so I can, I don't have to, you know, go to an employee and ask, or an employer and ask him to excuse an employee to take care of business. So I'm ready and available, and I appreciate the honor that you showed upon me. Thank you. Want to comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to retire.
You what?
Hey.
I'm trying to retire.
Don't retire. You'll work twice what you did in one or higher than the world you ever made it.
All right, Commissioner Bryan, do you have anything else, Commissioner? Uh, Commissioner Bryan, you have anything before the board?
I, I do. I have one issue. It's a mobile home on 7724 Alabama that had a fire quite a while ago. It's been through the special master's hearing, and they were supposed to take care of it within 30 days, and nothing's been done. It, it, it really is a, a health hazard, the safety and welfare of the community. And if it's appropriate, I would like for us to go ahead and take what action we have to do to take that out of there and lean the property. But we, we have to do something. It's, it's really become a, a problem. So maybe Mr. Novak or Mr. Butler can advise.
What, what was the address?
It's 7724 Alabama.
And you said, there was a code enforcement hearing already?
Yeah, I have the order from the special master.
Yeah, if Ms. Grover, if it's the order I'm familiar with, misorder, Ms. Grover would give the county permission to lean. So if the time has expired for compliance, we can move forward without any board action.
And it has gone well beyond the time.
I'll work with Mr. Aiken on that.
Okay, so do we need any motion or anything?
No, it's already been issued by the special magistrate.
Thank you. And then my only other issue is, you want me to address the pages that we pulled?
Exactly. I've got it right here.
Okay.
I want to see if you had anything else first. All right, we're gonna, uh, let's go to page 34 through 36 in the agenda.
And it, and it was clarification. In the public notice, this is for the, for the public. This is regarding the MSTU for the beach re-nourishment that we discussed and voted on at the last meeting. But in the notice, it says that the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 8th, during a regular county commission meeting. And now that we're meeting only on the 4th Tuesday, I was unclear if this was a mistake or do we need to clarify this since we don't have a regular county commission on the 8th?
You want me to address that?
I'll be happy to, Mr. Chairman. I wrote it, and, and, and there's one word in there. And in reviewing the calendar with the county, it would be approval for a special county commission meeting versus regular. So if you, and I'm, so I would correct that and say that it would be a special meeting versus a regular. Other than that, we need an authorization to go ahead and advertise those resolutions.
Okay, so we're having a special meeting December 8th, then?
If you, I think, well, you haven't approved those two pages yet. But when you do approve those two pages, then you, you as a commissioner, setting that date for a special hearing.
Okay, so then let me ask you this, just for clarification. Our December meeting is Christmas week, and I know we typically cancel that. Will we move the regular meeting to the 8th so that we have a regular county commission meeting? Or will we just hold a special meeting for this purpose?
Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chair? I did, I did mention this to you. This is a December 8th.
Yes.
Public hearing for MSTU. You are gonna have a meeting.
We're gonna meet on the 8th.
Yeah, the end of December, the 4th Tuesday, and, I mean, the end of November typically is gonna be your meeting. We have, we have the FEC coming up the week before that, at Thanksgiving that week. And my recommendation to you would be to have that meeting. Just go ahead and set a meeting for December 8th to handle the end of November, on December 8th.
So we would cancel?
Call it a regular then?
It could be a regular meeting.
As a regular meeting.
And we would cancel the Thanksgiving week meeting?
Exactly. And have, we can cover everything on December the 8th.
Okay.
Right, is that, will that be, Mr. Attorney, will that be?
Yeah, and if you, then the resolution and the memorandum would stay as it is, the language. So you could approve it as it stands.
Okay, well, let's, let's finish addressing these, and then we'll go from there.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, you knew then that this was gonna be addressed on December 8th?
Uh, I saw it in, when I was reading.
Just when you were reading this. So nobody was consulted on scheduling the meeting as far as a commissioner goes? None of the commissioners on this board were consulted on scheduling this meeting for the 8th?
I'll answer that, Commissioner. I, I spoke with Mr. Butler and looking at the calendar and trying to time it with the supervisor elections to get the resolutions advertised. So we pushed it out four weeks with the star. Looking at their advertising schedules, we picked the first date and worked with Mr. Butler. So the earliest in December we could do it. And also give Mr. Hanlon still an opportunity to finish what he needs to with the state before the holidays. This was the earliest date we could find, Mr. Butler and I.
Well, I've, I've also received quite a few calls from people on the Cape trying to clarify this MSTU. And what I'm hearing is that, I, I know what we discussed at the last meeting was putting it on the presidential primary in March, and that it would be cheaper because we would be piggybacking onto a ballot. That is the way that it was presented, and we agreed to that. What I'm hearing now is that, in fact, is, was erroneous information cannot be done, cannot be added onto a ballot. We'd have to have a new ballot, would actually cost more. So i, is it correct that this is going forward with a mail-out ballot in April at the cost of approximately $4,000?
Yeah. At your last meeting, you all instructed to move forward in this process. So we prepared the resolutions, prepared the public notice. The dates were from the supervisor. You could put it on the presidential, but it would be approximately three times the cost to the taxpayers. Or you push it to 30-day window out from the presidential election. You can't put it 90 days, anywhere in between 90 days before. So the presidential primary will happen. The county will then send out ballots as a separate election for a third of the cost in April. And I think we have a proposed date, and I don't have it in front of me, but the resolutions we provided to the clerk and to the supervisor has a deadline back, I think, towards the end of April. It's a 25-day window that the supervisor is gonna send it out.
Well, and I just want to clarify that, that that's a complete departure from what we agreed to at the last meeting. And the people on the Cape that are affected by this, they, and, and I'm not directing this at you, Mr. Novak, I just happen to be responding. I'm addressing this to the, to the, the board. We, we discussed one thing, and we're going with a different thing. Obviously, it didn't work. It was too expensive in the way that it was presented. So we have to, we'd be crazy to go that route. So now we're going to go to a mail-out, which I believe, what I've heard, is approximately $4,000. But I, I don't understand how this gets into the consent agenda when it's a complete departure from what we discussed. If it was what we had discussed last week and agreed to, then it, it would be appropriate in the consent agenda. But in fact, it, it is not what we discussed. And the differences are not anywhere in the agenda for people to know what they're voting on. And it's a lot of people that have to vote, they're, they're questioning the process, they're unsure, they, they don't trust the process. And I'm getting calls about it. So I think that we need to clarify. So, Mr. Chairman, can you, can you tell me how this ended up in the consent?
If I can, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll, I'll respond.
Yeah, nothing's been decided yet for the commission. That's the purpose of the notice, is to comply with the statute and let the public come and comment on December 8th. On December 8th, you will ratify the ballot language and the date of the election. So nothing's been set. All we, all we're looking for right here is authorization to advertise for four weeks the proposed language. On December 8th, you will have a public hearing where you'll take public comment, and you can change the language, you can change the ballot, you can change the dynamics of your district, you can change the date of the election. But none of those things have been set until you have your hearing December 8th. So we needed authorization to spend the county taxpayer money to advertise for four consecutive weeks. Nothing else has been decided. And in December, you will all decide when that date is. And the public will have an opportunity to come on that date, but this is required by statute.
Commissioner, let me implement here. Supervisor of Elections is in control, not the Board of County Commission. We do play a part, but we'd ask for this. Went in sitting and talking with Mr. Hanlon. Certain procedures you have to follow. And to my understanding, and we have a representative, and he's gonna be up here and just briefly here, Mr. Gene, you want to, uh, we've got some more, Gene, that's handled. Hold up just a minute, I get to, but what, what, we'll, just go ahead and take your seat. I want to follow the procedures here. I'll call you up in just a moment. But talking with the supervisor of Elections, the earliest that they can do it would be April to May. It has to be done between April and May. Can't get on the March. It must be by a, in a, with a monetary figure, it has to be done in a mail-out ballot. And there was one other stipulation in there. I don't know, but that's the main two things. It can only, it can take place in 2016, either in the month of April or the month of May. Now, the four-week advertising, and that gives the, the people can read it there and see what all, if it'll be worded. We can come back on the 8th if we need to modify, change, or anything, we can do that. But, uh...
But the point is that we discussed it, we discussed doing one thing last meeting, and we voted to go forward, and now it's in our consent agenda, as if that is what we discussed, and these are just the documents that complete what we discussed, when in fact, it's completely different. So it, it should have been placed on the agenda for discussion so that the public understands it's not cheaper, it's the same price that it would be. It's still taxpayers' dollars, even if it's in the budget that the supervisor of Elections has. The supervisor of Elections budget is taxpayer dollars. So the taxpayers have a right to know what we're spending them on. And when we, when we clearly have it, Dr. Hardman was at the podium, and the whole discussion was about the fact that it was cheaper. And so, in fact, it's not cheaper. It's the, it's pretty much the normal amount to do a mail-out ballot. And I just, my point is that this is something that should be discussed in front of the public. It's a complete change from where we were in this process. And, and this is something that I have brought up since the beginning, that we don't have a plan. So we're looking at $4 million, which we know it's going to cost at least $16 million, and we're asking the people to vote, to pledge $4 million, when we have no plan. And, and they're calling me, and they're asking me, where is the rest of the money coming from? What is the plan? So we are still risking going out for election, going out to this ballot, and, and people voting no, because they don't know what the plan is.
Commissioner, I think here in about, get down to item number six, I think Gene back here can shed a lot of light on the election portion of it. Maybe that can clarify some of these questions. All right, you still have the floor now.
Well, I, I, I guess, Mike, you don't seem to be concerned with the fact that we were just gonna go through and approve this? Now, now, I know it has to go through the public process, but every time we just push things through and the public doesn't hear, we get that farther away from the public knowing how we're conducting their business.
What's your wishes on page 34 through 36?
Well, if...
35 and 6. You want them out of the agenda? You want to leave them? What, what's your wishes? You brought it up. What do you want to do?
Well, I, well, we already pulled it out.
Yes.
So I don't think that we should go forward until it's clear to the public what, what we're doing.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion either.
Chairman?
Yes.
We asked Dr. Hardman to come. Well, this is very important.
Oh, I hadn't. Pardon me, come on, come on, Pat. Come on, Pat.
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association President. The, what you're asked, being asked to do today is, is to simply set an, a time and place to have the community come in and look at this referendum. You're not placing the referendum today. You're placing it on a public hearing. And therefore, you really, the difference was, and I am totally 100% responsible for having the confusion last time. I did not do my due diligence. I had left it to someone else, and I thought we were clear that we could go right ahead. And, and I think the chair suggested it being on the ballot with everything else. Made sense to me. We find out it didn't. The only difference in what you asked right now than what you approved last time was the difference between a mail ballot and a ballot on the primary election. That's the only difference right now. And that's what had to come back before you. This is a critical issue. The MSTU is a portion of the total price. Now, where you came, you used my name, I didn't use yours. where you came, you used my name, I didn't use yours. Where you came up with $16 million, I have no idea. That's not been put on the record anywhere. What we are asking the, the public and the Cape people to do, or the peninsula people, is to share, along with the county, along with the state. They won't get to vote on that in April. This is simply asking you as a group to bring it to a public hearing in December. And, and it's my fault that there was some confusion.
There's two votes. The commission today is asking simply to have the permission to advertise four consecutive weeks required by statute. The commission then will have a second vote in December after they hear from the public, which is required by statute, and at that time, they will craft the date and the ballot language. And if the commission approves the advertisement today, then they can move forward to have a public hearing. They can't have a public hearing if they don't advertise it for consecutive weeks. In December, after the commission hears from the public, the commission will be asked again to vote whether or not to put this referendum out to the public. So, there's two votes, and the public discussion and hearing can only commence with the advertisement. So, that's the purpose of those two pages, and if you can't get to December 8th public hearing without authorizing advertisement. It is for advertisements, it is a cost to the county, and before we run those ads, we need your permission to do so. In December, you all, all five of you will have an opportunity to vote whether or not you want to put this referendum to that, those three districts.
And my, my point is about clarifying for the public where we are in going forward. And when we put things into consent that aren't clear, I mean, the, the issue with the meeting time, we, we need to just lay these things out, put them out there for the public. It's, it's the element of secrecy that people don't trust, and if they don't feel like they understand the process, then they're not going to vote for it. I'm getting the calls. And, you know, $16 million was an amount that we have discussed in the past. Maybe that's not the amount. Clearly, we don't know what the amount is, and that's the issue. And it is an important issue. We all agree that it's an important issue. It's about how do we tackle it. I'm done.
All right, question. Page 34, 35, 36. Entertain a motion to have them moved from the consent agenda or kept in the consent, issue to the board?
We leave it in the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Barnes to leave it in the consent agenda. Do I hear a second? I have a second?
It, it's already been pulled, sir. So, if we can just have a motion of the board, whether or not you wish to approve that, to go out to advertisement, that would give us straight to it, and if I can get an approving vote...
Okay, all right, I stand corrected. Motion to, to approve for advertisement. We have to do it for four weeks. All right, that's a motion. I hear a second, I have a second to his motion.
A second and...
Second, thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Second, any further board discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make one comment. I'm against this. Number one, we've already gone out to the public one time. The public's already spoke on this issue. It failed. What are we going to do? We're, we're going to keep on with this issue? It's costing us money every single time that we put it on the ballot. It costs us money. That's my comment, and, and they're not going to get my support today, tomorrow, or the next day on this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other? You want the audience on this before we vote out for this advertisement? Not? Any opposition?
Yes.
I'm opposed.
Motion passes. Read it to, go out with the advertisement.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have, I, I need to ask for the floor again. I, I, I need to raise an issue here. This is very distressing to me to have to raise, but I think this is an important issue that speaks to the way that we are doing business. And I have a duty to the public and to the process, and I, I would just like to read this into the record. This is a, this is an email.
Commissioner Bryan first. Is it signed? Does it have a signature on it?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to read something into the record.
I just simply ask you a question.
And then I will answer your questions after I read it.
Does it have a signature?
No, it's not signed, and it's, and it's not notarized either.
Okay.
It's, okay, going around in circles so I can remember if I shared this with the board or not. Met with Dawn and Jeremy yesterday, referenced the MSTU. With the three votes we have, Ward is going to put it on the consent agenda. That means unless Bryant or Carmen pull it. It doesn't go up for discussion. It is just passed. I wouldn't put it past Bryant, but we will see. As a backup, the supervisor of elections will be there to explain why it can't be on the primary ballot and that he has money in his budget for the mail-out ballot, in case one of them do pull it. Jeremy will explain the process and has the referendum ready and the dates for public notification in place. If pulled, then Jerry will make the motion, Sandy will second, then Ward will vote with them. The public hearing will be held at a special B O C C meeting December 8th, and the mail-out ballot will be April 12th. That means the first assessment of taxes won't be until 2018. Hopefully, I've met with everyone that is needed to make this happen. I could use a backup in the audience in case it is pulled. This is extremely distressing. These are violations, not the way that we are supposed to be doing business in this county. This is what I'm continually expending energy and working against, and I know that there are a few people that are tired of hearing my point, but this is against the law. There is a reason we all drag our rear ends into this room. All of you out there, you have better things to do. We're all in here because the business of this county is supposed to be done in the sunshine. Now, Mr. Chairman, this went down exactly like this email states, to the T, to the T. So, I'd like to know, did you meet together? Were you in the same room? Who's, who is putting this whole thing together? How, how did this all play out?
It's news to me. You say there's no signature, so I won't make any comments. If a person can put something out and they're not man or woman enough to put their name to it, and I, it's...
This is an email, it's not signed, because you can't sign emails. This is an email from Dr...
You got your name on there if you want to.
This is an email from Dr. Hardman on October 21st to about 10 people in the, in the community. It's not signed, emails are not signed, but it is from Dr. Hardman out. Now, I think this board agrees that we need to take care of the issue on the Cape, but there is no reason why we cannot conduct our business in compliance with the law. How often is this going on with this board? It's clear, because you come in here, and you're all set, you're all on board, you're all on the same page. We, we're handed something that's huge, and then we all vote on it. I want to know what's going on, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Nothing. Yes, sir. Commissioner Quinn, we recognize you.
I'm offended. I don't appreciate whoever, whoever get that letter from, they're accusing me of meeting with these guys personally. I work a full-time job. I don't have, I really don't have time to go and meet with these commissioners individually. I'm not in violation of the Florida Sunshine Law. I worked through that guy right there, and I worked through this guy. I called them, I said, hey, what, is there any information I need to know? I get calls from Ms. Hartman, people that worked with her, they explain to me about what's going on with issues that are coming up. I don't have time to meet with each commissioner and discuss board business. That's in violation of the Florida Sunshine Law. I work a full-time job. I don't have time to go around violating the Florida Sunshine Law based off a MST issue that we're, we're dealing with. The, 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 the vote was to advertise. I say, yes, let's move forward with advertisement. What's the big deal about? We'll, we'll deal with it on December 8th, but I'm offended that whoever you get that letter from accusing me of being in violation of the Florida Sunshine Law.
And the question is for Mr. Chairman, how this all came about. I mean, it's clear that this email that went out on October 21st predicted exactly, and it wasn't a prediction, it was a clear, this is how it's going down. And this has to stop. We, this is... And again, and I said this earlier in the meeting, Mr. Chairman, because you are here virtually every day. I mean, you're, you're in everything, so that's why I know you're the one that can answer this, because you know everything that's going on. And this is, I said it earlier, this is why I was elected, because people are tired of this.
He's supposed to. He's chairman of the board.
Well, he's not supposed to.
Yes. Dr. Hardman, you've kind of been put on the bubble here. I'd like to hear, I like to deal in the facts, not some other people's opinions. I'm going to recognize you here for three minutes or less, and we got to move on. We've got a lot of important business here.
When other commissioners attack people in Ms. Bryant's district, she gets very upset.
Yes.
It seems like Ms. Bryant's done that to me twice this morning.
Yes, she has.
She has accused me of, of breaking the law.
Correctly.
And I take great exception to that. I have, and no one in this board broke the law. These guys did not break the law. That email was a private email to my board on the Coastal Community Association. Each one of them had asked to be able to talk to different people. They reported back to me that they had talked to different people and given them the reason that the MSTU should be brought forward. That was simply my consensus of what they had told me and what I had talked to different people on, and that was my consensus of what would happen. There was nothing wrong with what went on. There was no change in what was going to happen. It was simply whether it was on a ballot or a mail-out ballot. That's the only difference that was going to occur. I take great exception to somebody on this board suggesting that I have broken the law.
Thank you, Dr. Hardman. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Bryan?
Nope, that, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me say something. I have...
Barnes, you have the floor.
I don't appreciate her saying that we've met, because I haven't met with the first commissioner. I meet with my, our attorney, and I meet with Mr. Butler. I've met with Ms. Hartman. I represent those people down there at the Cape, and I'll continue to represent the people at the Cape. If I can help them do anything, I promise you I'll do it. But I have not. Let me get that straight with any other commissioner, and I will not. I will meet with Dr. Hartman. I probably will be meeting with her again, because she is a representative from down there. So, I, I don't, I don't know where you get this from, but I, let me just clear it up, because people know me, and I'm not.
And, and my question was, how did this come about? I did not say that, that you did meet. My question for the chairman was, how did this come about?
Chairman, let's move forward. I am. Commissioner Barnes, you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you, sir. I have one thing, and I will say that I, I do not meet outside the sunshine. Yes, I am the chair. Yes, I talk to Dr. Hardman. I have her phone number. She calls me. I call her. I meet, I meet with the staff. That's what they're hired for. The attorney is to keep me straight. That's his job, to keep us out of trouble, and he does a marvelous job for that. The administrator deals with me, not hardly. A day goes by that I don't discuss business and issues with the county administrator. That's part of this job and is being in the chair. But I have one thing, and then we'll move right along. We have people who's been very patient. Yes.
Okay.
What?
I got a couple of things I need to bring up if I could.
Sure. Now, oh, I thought you were through. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I got, uh...
Let me get mine out of the way, and then we'll go, come back to you. We're going to flip it a little bit here. In the north end of county, in Stone Mill Creek, with our fire coordinator, I don't know if he's still here or not. Yeah, I'll see you. Thank you, Mr. Price. We have a fire station up there. It's absolutely in an isolated area, and it serves no purpose. It takes too long to get to it. You've got to drive 3.4 miles to get to the station, 3.4 miles to come out. No one lives right there, and we've been talking with a landowner, a Mr. and Mrs. Charles Pitts. Any of you familiar, you go by up there where the creek stop is, you turn left to go in on Stone Mill Creek to the Gulf CI. Right down, as the road makes a turn there, there's a tower. Mr. Pitts owns property on the south side or left side of the road, and Mr. Price had spoken with him. He come back to me, and I said, well, we got to put it through the proper channels. I set up a meeting with Mr. and Mrs. Pitts, county administrator, the attorney, and Mr. husband, through his business, sat down with the Pitts's, and they're willing with some minor stipulations to donate to Gulf County one and a half, approximately one and a half acres, relocate a fire station, which will, by relocating it, it will cover the north end. We have people in the north end of the county that's outside of the five miles of this station. By moving this station out, it'll give it better response time, and it will give the people in the north end of the county an opportunity to have a little reduction in their insurance. Now, this will not take place in the next few years. Mr. Pitts and Mrs. Pitts are aware of that. It must be a fire station. It can't be a lay-down yard for asphalt or a place to dump, to park dump trucks. It's, in just minor stipulations, it must be a fire station. But anyway, I want to bring that before the board, and what I will need, and we're going to get back to you, is I need board approval for the attorney, administrator, Mr. husband, to work with the Pitts family and proceed with getting all the documentation that we need. Need a, am I correct there, Mr. Attorney? Or you want to shed any on that?
Sir, I, I do recall from the meeting that they're going to be making a donation in terms of the professional service. I believe the survey that's going to be required of the property and meets and bounds will be a county obligation.
Sure.
So, we'll provide the professional services to them to assist in this donation to the county.
Thank you. You want a motion? Do we need a motion to proceed?
Yes, sir.
For you to proceed and the administrator? I need a motion. I could, I'll entertain one.
Sure. Some more, Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, Commissioner Quinn. I hear a second, second. Thank you. Second, Commissioner McLemore. Any further board discussion? Want the audience? Any opposition? All right, motion pass 5-0, proceed. Now, we'll go back over to Commissioner Barnes. That's all for me. Commissioner Barnes, you take what time you need.
I'm fine. I just, I know that some people have already seen is, is there's a speed limit change on C, on 30E. Starts at east of the State Park entrance, goes from 45 to 35, and we got, I think it's October the 28th, 9th, if weather permit itself. Also, week before last, when Commissioner Bryan's district was having fish kill, I went down to Indian Pass and got on the beach and rode all the way. Had to go around on some areas you couldn't get to see if we had any down there, because that was a bad situation. I went all the way to the State Park, talking to people. Other than that, it's been, less suspended the last day. Also, on our paving on C-30B, Commissioner Yeager, back in 2012, put in for a grant to pave that down there. I think it's kind of got blown out of proportion, so to speak. Some people thought it was going to widen the highway and cause a bunch of speeding and all down there, but the highway itself's going to be the same, but there will be a walking path. And I was going to ask Mr. Butler if he'll blind everybody so we can tell the truth about this and not hear it from a different angle.
Commissioner, you called me yesterday afternoon. I didn't get all the information until this morning, so I didn't get back with you on all of it. We made application in April 2012 for that project, for 30B Indian Pass Road. We had a bid date on June, June 15th, 2015. We awarded on June 23rd, 2015. The contract amount for that project is $1.496 million, $1.8 million for the project. Contractor awarded to was Roberts and Roberts. They got 38 and 30B at the same time on the same contract. The roadway length is 2.95 miles. They are adding the five-foot shoulder on each side of the road, and, and it's not at the same level as roadway, but as all shoulder you see. Some people call them bicycle lanes or walking lanes. Five-foot shoulder on each side. They changed all of the, the cross drains, going to reinforce concrete pipe underneath the road, concrete head walls on each end, changing those out along that whole section of the roadway. We have the Corps of Engineers permit in our hand. It came in less than a week ago. We're awaiting DEP permit, and I think DEP permit is a CCCL permit through DEP, and it's imminent. It should be here any time. Then, it turned the contract to loose. But it's, it's, it's been going on since April 2012 till now. Waiting on one permit.
All right, I apologize to for there, but thank you, Commissioner Barnes. All right, this time, go to address item number five, a quasi judicial hearing, two parcels of land. I have to go over to the attorney. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to the first, is a public hearing on Gulf County ordinance. It's been advertised. At your last meeting, you took the recommendations of your planning board with regards to a land use map amendment. Consistent with the statute, in order for us to ratify the land use change, you need to adopt the ordinance that's been advertised and introduced on page 201 in your packet today. It's a small-scale map amendment, parcel ID 01045-050R. There is a required public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance with regards to a quasi judicial, is not required for the ordinance. That was last That was last month. You had your quasi judicial, which was waived at that time. So this is a public hearing on the adoption of the ordinance. If there's no objection from the Board, I'll read it by title. If there is, I can, I'd be happy to read the entire ordinance.
By title on it, please, unless anyone on the Board, uh, read it by title.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance reads as, followed by title, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of Gulf County, Florida, by and through procedures required for small-scale land use map amendment pursuant to authority under Florida Statute 163-3187 and Florida Statute 125, specifically amending parcel ID 01045-050, one acre of land lying and being part of Section 35, Township 5 South, Range 9 West, Gulf County, Florida, from conservation to residential and providing for an effective date. Uh, again, I, I just, the whereas clauses in here lay out the history of that area of the county. It was all placed in conservation, uh, and historically the county has, uh, provided a waiver of the fees for this application, which you have been consistent in your approach on prior applications. The planning board heard this last month. After that, they made a recommendation for your approval. At your September 22nd meeting, you approved this land use change and with doing so, we created the ordinance and have advertised it and I'd ask for you to conduct a public hearing, a public comment before your consideration.
Go to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns? Anyone? Mr. Attorney?
If there's no comment, then there's just any comments of the Board or if there's an action item for its adoption.
This was approved by, by the PDR Board, is that correct?
It, it was and you, and this Commission last month approved it to be ratified by ordinance. So today is memorializing that land use change, consistent with the statute. I just asked the Commission to, the Commissioner to abstain on any action item.
All right, I have a motion. Now, he has to abstain. I need a motion. Move by Commissioner Barnes. I have a second. Second by Commissioner Bryan. Any further Board discussion? All right, I've been to the public. Any opposition?
Abstain.
You have to abstain. Motion passes. Oh, one abstention, you need to get with her before you leave and sign the proper documents. All right?
Thank you.
Next.
Mr. Chairman, the second item, uh, is with regards to the planning board meeting, uh, most recently on a variance request. Um, Mr. Lowery has the, uh, recommendations of the planning board. It is a quasi judicial, um, with regards to a setback variance requirement or request on Highway 98 in St. Joe Beach. And after Mr. Lowery makes that presentation, I believe there's an authorized representative on behalf of the applicant here in attendance as well. Two things for the Commission with regards to quasi judicials. One, if the Commission, I'd go down and poll each of you, if there's a quasi judicial, I'd ask you for ex parte communications. And two, we'll swear in anybody that wishes to, uh, offer testimony on the application. If there's no objection, then we'll waive the quasi judicial, consistent with county policy. We'll go immediately into a public hearing. We'll hear comments with regards to the application and then move to public comment and Board action.
Good deal. All right. This time we're moving to public hearing. Is a, is the, uh, Mr. Lowery?
Yeah.
Come on then and we'll go here with the, uh, representative. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if you'll look at, uh, the memo I put in front of you today, uh, this variance request is for Ellis Odell Smith Jr., parcel ID 03806-082R, Section 31, Township 6 South, Range 11 West, St. Joe Beach, Beacon Hill area, both-side Highway 98, roadside building setback variance request. I would ask, uh, Mr. Husband, come up. Um, on this request, uh, the planning board recommended to, is recommending to the Board of County Commissioners by three-o vote, a permit up to a 10-foot setback on Highway 98. This will allow a 15-foot variance to the 25-foot setback there current, currently in place on Highway 98.
Husband?
Mr. Chairman, prior to Mr. Husband's comments, I just ask, um, before you conduct the hearing, is there any, uh, objection to waiving a quasi judicial proceedings from the Commission, from the applicant or from the public?
Any objections? No objections?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, as Mr. Lowery state, I'm sorry. Jack Husband, Southeast Asian Consulting Engineers, P.O. Box 141, Weewahichka, Florida, 32465. As Mr. Lowery stated, um, I think the only thing he didn't state was the land use designation is, is owned as mixed commercial residential. Um, this is your typical type variance due to the DEP setback line that we use during the permitting process. And there was a revised site plan that I believe, if you don't have a copy of, I have copies of it here, that I presented during the actual planning board meeting. And during the planning board meeting, two of the items were designated as where the variance actually meets our, our rules under the variances, 2.0507, numbers two and number four.
And Commissioners, you do have that revised site plan in front of you.
Okay.
Put it in your packet.
If you don't, I've got copies here, full-size copies here, or half-size copies.
Do we need a motion to move forward with this? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, if there's no other questions of the applicant, it's up for the discussion amongst the Board.
You want, the Board members have any questions for Mr. Husband, the representative for Mr. Ellis Smith Jr.?
I have a quick question.
Sure, you have the floor.
Only pertaining to Lot 2A, this setback.
Let me make real sure for you. I don't wanna get it wrong. Yes, that's correct.
Motion move forward, Mr. Chairman. Motion on the floor. Motion in order, Mr. Attorney, here we in this hearing here.
Yes, sir, it's a public hearing. If there's no public comment, you move forward with a motion.
And I will, um, second the motion and, and just for the public's clarification, this is the setback from Highway 98 along the beach that we have granted for the properties along the beach there. So, uh, they come closer up to the roadway because there is limited space to build towards the water. And this is a common, uh, setback that we grant. I just wanna put that out there for the public.
And, and it's, and to help, it's due to a specific rule criteria in the DEP rule that, that, that once, it's like number 11 of 12 of the criteria and that we cannot meet, can meet very, very little of it.
Yeah. I've got a motion. We have a second. Any other Board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience on this variance? Not any opposition to this setback variance? Motion passed five and O.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, consistent with your county policy, you adopted forms, as did the PDRB, about a year ago. Um, if you have no objection, you can waive the readings, um, if, of the form that's been required to grant your variances now in Gulf County. Um, if there's a motion of the Board to waive the reading and authorize the Chairman to sign along the planner's signature, it's the official document granting the variance. If there's a motion to that effect to waive the reading and approve the author, the signature.
I'll entertain a motion. But, Commissioner McLemore? Second by Commissioner Bryan. Any further discussion from the Board? Anyone in the audience? Not? No opposition? Motion passed five and O.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Where we at now? All right, at this time, that concludes the variances. Item number six, uh, Mr. John Hanlon, his representative, Gene.
We probably don't need to see him anymore.
This'll clear up some of the, we have to. This will clear up some of the, we had two issues here. Gene, give your name right quick and...
Gene McCrone, representing John Hanlon, Supervisor of Elections. Uh, just a little clarity on why we could not put, uh, referendum on the Presidential Primary Ballot. That ballot really is for Democrats. We have Democrats, Republicans, and there was no way to get a ballot for non, those people who had no political affiliation. So there was not a way to, but we could run it as concurrent election and basically have a, have it at the same time, have two elections going on at the same time. But then you would have been, we would have had to code machines for the north end of the county for early voting and the south end of the county. So our cost would have been almost triple what it would have been. Now, it sounds crazy that we had to have early voting on the north end of the county for the referendum, but the state legislature requires that we have early voting for a specific period of days and if we have an election, we have to have early voting. Only way we get around that is by having a mail ballot election. And for the mail ballot election, we're looking at about April the 12th, I think is our actual date, April the 12th.
Yeah.
Okay? Anything else? Anything else?
Oh, I just, that would just clear up some questions on.
Okay.
Have the hearing, which we'll public advertise.
You'll see back there.
Item of the eight.
Yes.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Gene.
Any questions? Anyone? Mr. Stedman? You here, sir?
Yes.
You made it. I know you've had to come all the way from Mobile.
Yes, sir.
All right, we will address you on Union Impasse Shop Coordinator. Come on up, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, and I'm sorry you had to, with the weather conditions, I know the drive from Mobile here takes a good little bit of time.
Yes, sir.
All right, give, give, uh, Mrs. Roberts your name and who you represent.
Alan Stedman, Business Manager, Operating Engineers, Local 653.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, before Alan starts, Alan was here a year ago on the same issue on it, Union Impasse issue. We go over from Mobile this morning, bad weather and, but, uh, we, uh, we have it, we have an impasse. Last year we had, Boy, we voted on it last year to agree to go with the shop coordinator position. We're at that same point again this year, the only issue with how we, with the Union. And Alan operate, he's operating engineer, business agent, and he's, he's gotta stand here for the Union for what they want. They voted not to have the shop coordinator position. That shop coordinator position, the way it public works, what he, what it does, it's a mechanic. And that mechanic schedules the work, determines which is the most important to come in, maybe in an emergency or something urgent, to come in. Also, the inventory, he's firsthand knowledge of knowing what the inventory is. So what we did a year ago, instead of having, if you were to say a company man to, to do that, the, the mechanic that knows more than anyone else knows about what's going on mechanic-wise, um, a year ago, County Commission agreed for a $2 an hour increase in pay for that position and, and it saved us a, a chunk of money on the company's side. So we, we're at the same point again. Uh, Alan, he's, he's got a recommendation or request from the Union side and, and after Alan talks, I like to talk.
I, we'll do that. We'll come back to you. Alan, you have the floor.
Oh, we're like I said, we're just, you know, they voted it not to ratify the contract again and so we're gonna skip to what we did last time. Skip Special Master and just, you know, give it to you and let y'all make your ruling on it. I really don't understand, you know, why they're not wanting to go along with it, but, I mean, all I can do is give the con, you know, let them vote. They voted it down, so we're at the same pass, impasse again, so it's, you know, it's up to y'all.
I understand your position very clearly. I worked with UST workers for over 30 years, uh, been on both sides of the table, so I, I understand the situations. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, well, we have a, a certainly good relationship with Alan and his group. Well, he's worked ever since you've been on Board, he's working fine, a little bit hoarse today. But, um, we need this position and we need a shop coordinator position. We've had it under our belt now for a year. It's worked out just like we thought it would. It saved the company money and my recommendation, our rec, our recommendation to you is you stay like this, keep the shop coordinator in place and we'd need to vote the Board on that.
Yep. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll, uh, make a motion, move forward with this. If this passes today, but we have to address this issue again, Don, because we addressed it last year, we're addressing it again now. Is this something we're gonna have to address?
Yes, it'll have, if, they'll vote again come this October. If they don't ratify, we'll have to bring it back to you one more time like that.
Okay, I'll just, I'll, I'll put in my motion and we do it for the next five years. And we don't have to come back. Now, you serious or you...
Oh, I'm dead serious. I'm dead serious. This is what we want.
Well, I don't know, we, where's the Attorney at?
I, I don't know. I would have, we'll have to check with, in the, you know, the FERC rules on that to make sure.
We've, we've got union negotiations coming up.
Yes.
And that would be a good time.
Gonna try to handle it in there.
Yes, sir. I would rather, yeah, if we could just, let's handle it like that we're doing this time and if, if they don't ratify the next year, then it'll come back out on the table because we, we start negotiating, negotiations after that.
Take that second part out.
We might have to go through this one more time and...
Do, we'll do it. All right. Motion on the floor. I have a second. Have a second?
Second, I second.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Any other Board discussion? Anyone in the audience on this? Any opposition? Motion passed five and O.
Thank you for your time.
Having a long drive for about...
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Y'all move this fast. Thank you. All right, at this time, Amy, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh...
Let me know where I'm, sir.
I think you're gonna be discussing this, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
That is correct.
I give your name and you're with the, uh, oil and gas fracking.
Okay, let's, my, my, I am from the Environmental Caucus of Florida, which is a nonpartisan group, not Republican or Democrat. We just care about the environment. Uh, I gave you those folders a couple of weeks ago. I brought them over. I hope you've had time to look them over. Um, I want, I, today I get, handed you a little package. It has, it has a paperclip on it, so maybe you can pull it out of your stuff. Uh, first I wanted to mention that, uh, excuse me, uh, the first letter is from Gwen Graham. Uh, she is specifically speaking about the effects of seismic testing and fracking in York County. Uh, she calls it an unproven in this unique geology and could lead to developers employing more potentially damaging, including more dangerous chemicals. Uh, she is talking about hydraulic fracturing posing a great threat because of the risk of chemical contamination and because fracking is very water-intensive. Uh, I see that even your crest, you, water is very important to this county. It's, it's all over your county seal. Uh, the second letter is to, from, um, Senator Nelson, who you also mentioned earlier. Uh, he says that seismic, this seismic, uh, testing is troubling as it represents the first step in fracking. He calls it reckless and he's, also says water withdrawals and pollution from fracking could upset the ecologic, ecological balance to multiple downstream ecosystems. He calls it a dangerous step in the wrong direction and seismic surveys, possible future fracking activity are inconsistent with the protection efforts and recovery plans for imperiled species. On the next page, um, now, um, I bring these two up. They are, both letters are addressed to Sally Jewell. Sally Jewell, the Secretary of the Department of the Interior, wants to frac on all public lands, not just, uh, and that includes Appalachia Cola, Osceola, Ocala and the Everglades. I'd like to draw your attention to this Senate bill. Somebody, uh, I would like to quote one of the Commissioners earlier. It's, sometimes you gotta, like, sometimes you have to stand up to the state. In this bill, where I have marked it with the asterisks, you can see that they are preempting your ability to make decisions in your own county on fracking. Uh, we would like to see this bill defeated and we would like to see a ban on fracking going through, forward. Uh, and you are part of that puzzle. The, uh, the next piece that I've, I have here, I'm so glad that I'm following the union representative. This is a resolution by the AFL-CIO statewide resolution to ban fracking. They, I know jobs are important in a, in a small county like this, but even the AFL-CIO recognizes the dangers of fracking and how dangerous it can be to, uh, the workers. Lastly, uh, you made a comment when I came in, and I do appreciate it, but you mentioned that if you will go to this page in the, in the package that I gave you, these are counties and cities that have already passed resolutions to ban fracking. Uh, we now have these counties and cities, we have sixteen counties and I believe thirty-five cities totaling, um, uh, over fifty resolutions that have been passed around the state. They represent over eight million, eight-point-three million people. That's forty-two percent of the population. We started getting these resolutions in January. You can see that this is an issue that, uh, they are very interested in. People do not want it. Um, I brought this map, you may have already seen it. I also gave you a copy of Cholas, uh, they are fracking in this area, fracking will occur. I wanted to ask, which of you represents Weewahatchka?
Mister?
Both of you represent Weewahatchka?
Two and...
All five of us do.
Oh, so you don't represent a specific area?
Yes, we have this, we represent, but we're county.
Those in both of there.
Yeah. Uh, if, all of this will be in, uh, part of the district I represent.
Okay, 'cause it is definitely gonna be impacting it. I don't know if you realize, there will be a thousand blasts going off, seven days a week, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
I, I hear no...
Yes, sir, and I gave you a copy of that report also. Uh, they, they will be, um, there will be quite a bit of disturbance. Not only will it be disturbing noise-wise, but it'll be a disturbance in terms of, uh, the trucks coming in and out. If you do, uh, if they do the seismic testing and they decide to frac, there will be trucks coming out, in and out. Uh, two hundred per frac, so, uh, so I, I think you need to consider that in terms of the roadway. Uh, you, you mentioned you gotta pay for it, um, and that, if there are trucks coming in and out and they destroy your roadway, you guys will end up paying for it. If they frac and your water comes, gets destroyed, your, your commission will have to pay to repair that water system. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions of me? And, uh, I would ask that if you're not gonna pass the resolution, that you consider it, and you've talked about listening to your citizens, uh, I would like to, an opportunity to get, uh, comments from your citizens to you via postcards that I've, I've gotten almost twelve hundred postcards in the last three weeks to go to county commissioners, and I'm hope that you will listen to your citizens, what they have to say about this issue. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Landry? Is Mr. Landry here?
Mr. Landry, I told, that he's not gonna be able to be here.
Okay, we, we scratched him, all right. Okay. Before we move, Mr. Yeager, I apologize you were to follow behind Mrs., uh, Jenkins, but, uh, had a lot going on, and, uh, come up.
We need to take a picture of this.
Just more or less for informational purposes for the board. I wanted to briefly, I think I've give you a handout, uh, that, that gives you the projects for pot one that, that I've heard from each of you on what we need to do for pot one for the county's submittals. Uh, along with that, just for the general public, so the EDC will probably submitting requests for operation dollars and incentive fund. Uh, partly of what that will do, will ca, take the operation of the Economic Development Coalition off of the backs of the taxpayer. So, they're gonna request, EDC's gonna request some operational dollars, which will help you in your budget. Secondly, the TDC, you know, working with, uh, Ms. Jenkins, uh, will be working on beach restoration. Uh, what, should be working with Michael Nebraska, 'cause this is a long process. Uh, as Jerry well knows, we, we, we're asking for appropriations from the state legislature for some of the, those issues. And so, it's, it's a timing issue of how much do we ask for pot one money, uh, to begin with, for, for beach restoration. But along with that, there's parks and piers. Some of the, uh, NERDA projects that is in District Three are short. Uh, I've spoken with DEP, with Pier Spirit, about how, how short they are, so there'll be some funds. Once we get all those dollars amount, we'll, we'll put those in. And this is ba, basically an update for you, you'll have many options to change or, or approve or, or add to this particular list, but we wanted to mention them. Uh, another thing that TDC will be, uh, putting in for is, is wayfinding, which is signage, uh, to distinguish specifically Gulf County and, and our brand, to, uh, help market the brand for the TDC. Uh, also, the Board of County Commissioners, I've heard that you want land acquisition for our, for our bays and our rivers, and, and we'll, we'll be looking for specific parcels. Some of you have, uh, listed specific parcels, and there's other parcels that may come about. So, we're, we're talking about a land acquisition fund. We missed one on the Cape here, uh, a few months ago, because we just didn't, uh, act and move forward. We didn't have any specific money for it, and I'm, I'm hearing you say that that's one of the things that you want with. So, that's one, one of the items that we'll put in as for the Board of County Commissioners. Other projects that we will propose, working on with the other agencies, uh, Commissioner McLamore mentioned Indian Lagoon. That's one of the things that's on this list, is Indian Lagoon Restoration. I've already, a few months ago, contacting DAX and, and DEP about doing a shelling, uh, in, in the lagoon. As most of you know, especially Jerry and, and Carmen and Ward, uh, we, we used to have the best oysters come out of that lagoon of anywhere in the world, and now we're not, we're not achieving any of that. So, we're, we're talking about working with DAX on, on doing some shelling, uh, Indian, Indian Lagoon. Uh, St. Joe Bay Water Quality, Clarity and Quality, we're working with DEP, and also, we will be working with the council. There's al, already one project that'll be, uh, in the Money Bio area, so wanted you, to make you aware of that. And also, there's some aquaculture interest. Uh, as most of you know, we already have, uh, an aquaculture business in, in Gulf County. It's, it's shrimp farming, but I've heard of others wanting to do something with scallops in the bay to try to make sure we, we continue, uh, that process. But I just wanted to present this list to you. Uh, I don't necessarily take a, a vote of the board, but just, I, I wanted for informational purposes. If there's other things going on, we have the portal open right now that, that people can submit projects. So, you'll have some not-for-profits, you'll have some other government agencies that will, will submit into this portal. So, you'll have a lot more projects than this, just these projects. And the way that process will go, is this portal will close on the, November the thirtieth, and then they will go to our consultant for, for some scoring. And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll put that list together based on the scoring. That list will come back to you. You can add to, take away of, whatever, whatever the board sees fit, but at the end of the day, you're the last ones that will see that, going through that process. So, just wanted to make you aware, and if you have any questions or anything, please feel free.
Know where you're at.
You know where I'm at.
I have just a, a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Um, the, the TDC Parks and Piers, that, that includes beach walkovers, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Not only new beach walkovers, but walkovers for repairs that, that...
Composite boards, okay. And then you and I had talked about the sewer to Beacon Hill, and that that was a city project. Is that a pot one project for them?
Well, it could be. Uh, what I foresee them doing, I think through the legislature, we're already, which you've approved and the city have approved, to ask for funding for that project through the legislature. It may or may not fund the whole project, but I think if that legislature gets close to funding that whole project and we need to kick in a little money, we wanted to make sure that, I, I'm sure the city wants to make sure that, that there's enough money in that project, uh, to, to complete that project. That's an important project on the beach, to get, get those people off sewer, off the subject.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry for the oversight. All right, Benny, you and Randy, Randy or Benny, whoever, both of you can come up. Both can, you're both on the... And, uh, either one.
Ben Priggin, ninety-two, twenty-three, West Highway ninety-eight. As y'all know, gentlemen, I was, appreciate being here today. I talked to y'all about three months ago on the same subject. Y'all went along with it, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Butler, the sheriff, was all explained very simply. DOT had made up their mind, I talked to them before I talked to any of y'all. Train had left the station, they said they was gonna go within a thousand feet, they were gonna cross US ninety-eight twice, put a crosswalk, cost twenty-five thousand for each crosswalk. They were gonna do that, stop traffic, the sheriff said that was not good. They were gonna put just only in Beacon Hill, not all the way in, the whole county of Bay, Mexico Beach, and all rest of Gulf County was on the land side. They chose Beacon Hill to put it on the Gulf side. We'd already gave them lots of stuff, we got the setback mine week, there's no place you just approved a, a set, or the highway side. There's no place for us to park. All people in Gulf County and visitors park on the beach side to go to the beach. They, and if you put the sidewalk over there, you're now going to make them cross the street. They're not gonna go down a thousand feet to each one of those crosswalks. All those little kids and all their stuff, they're gonna walk across that. Now, look at the safety. The sheriff brought that up. But DOT is, the commissioner said, I worked with the state thirty years, they're hard-headed. They think they're gods, they're not. We have to, is this county has to stand up to them. Now, I asked them, I, everything that I told you here, I told them, I asked him, would he, Mr. Fowler, I'll call his name. He was a engineer. I said, would you go to your supervisor and tell him what I said, and see if he'll change his mind? He, I said, he'd call me back. He said his supervisor went along with him, they knew what was good for Gulf County and the people and the safety. I said, you telling me that you know more than our sheriff? I said, you're crazy. I sat up here four months ago and said it was a great idea, went stupid. I went to our newspaper, he did an article on it for everybody to read. The problem is, after I got up here and talked, the only call I got from anybody was at the chair. And he asked me, is any other stuff I had? I said, I would appreciate it, and y'all all voted, asked him to contact DOT and to be up here, to talk with us. That's what I know. There is no time, at any time, that the commissioner had called me, except last week. She called me and confirmed last week. That's the only time I've heard from the commissioner, Brian, are any of the commissioners, except you? And I'm just gonna, I have to tell you, just like it is. What I'm telling y'all, I asked the commissioner over the phone, I, we had a good conversation, and I asked her, would she tell me that she would stop DOT from coming on the water side because the people do not wanna park on the land side and cross US ninety-eight? And we didn't wanna have big trucks stopping within a thousand feet twice for a crosswalk. She said that she didn't wanna stop the sidewalks in, in the thing. I said, well, would you give me your word that you will stop the crosswalk? She says, we'll discuss it. It is a good idea.
Any questions? I think we've...
But I wanna point out, Mr. Butler, Mr. Michael Hammond, the sheriff, this commission, I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna clarify that I spoke with Mr. Priggin after the meeting, when he was here last, and that's when I reached out to Mr. Fowler and was, I had Mr. Fowler send me the drawings, and we were working through some of the issues. And when we talked on the phone, I, I would not commit to dropping the project, but I did commit to you to work through the issues and come up with a solution that worked for you. And I asked you, would you be okay with the sidewalk being on the north side? I just wanted to make sure that there weren't issues over there that I wasn't understanding in putting it on the north side, and you said that you thought that would be a great idea. And I committed to you to work through those issues so that we could salvage the project. So, um, you know, that, that's how it went. Now, it's, I've spent a lot of time going through the drawings. I went out to your house and, and looked at the situation. I walked the area, looked at the specifics, and was talking with DOT, and I still believe that those issues could have been worked out and that we could come up with a sidewalk that is not on the beach side of the road, that... You know, we talked about a few different solutions as well, Mr. Priggin, you and I. So, I still feel that, that there is a solution that would make everybody happy.
Good deal, Randy.
Thank you, sir. That bell worked on my father, I need to get a copy of that for my mother, please, if you don't mind. A little buzzer. Uh, expanding on that, I think I got six minutes, I hope.
Five.
Five, okay. Um, looking at it, the reason I said I was gonna follow up with what you did right, if you look at DOT's website on their work programs, which is, this project comes under work programs, there's a whole detailed list of what they have to go through, and it's very structured, I understand that. The part I think they kinda missed it on was the public awareness. You know, that script may work for somewhere, uh, where there's not a lot of contentious part of that, but to have the way they noticed us was not appropriate, in my opinion. Um, that being said, if you look at it now, if you didn't stop this train wreck, it was gonna be bad, it was done. And, uh, and it would have been something, I guarantee you, in two or three years, there'll be down there digging up concrete 'cause it didn't work, and that's a waste of taxpayers' dollars, which you don't wanna do. Um, so that's why I said I was gonna follow up with you, you did a great job on, on stopping that, and thank you for that. Uh, going forward, you always wanna look, going forward, what can we do? I see Mr. Yeager back there, I was gonna hit him up after this meeting, about possibly looking at some grants, getting these citizens that were here today, they're supporting, I support it, but how do you do that? We have a beacon down there that's not working, if you know, it's not working right now. That's a big part of that, that area. I mean, growing up, I remember that beacon at night going off, look what you did with the lighthouse down here in Port St. Joe. It's awesome. I mean, that's something that maybe we wanna look at and start writing grants to make maybe a big bike trail through there. But do it right the first time, that's what I'm asking. Enough about that. Uh, I think everybody's clear on that. I wanna thank you for what you're doing. Um, I, most of the times in Tallahassee, this is the first time I've ever heard of the scallop festival in Tallahassee. I had fifteen people call me, hey, what's going on with that? And it's because of your advertisement that you've done, uh, she's a shining star. I, I want y'all to know that, she is a shining star. A lot of people calling, wanting to come down here, the, the, I said, it's a great place to go. I saw the deputies out there, they were helping, you know? We don't see that a lot of times in big cities. You know, that, that when you're doing it, you got law enforcement there, and you put on a good events. I mean, she's a shining star. That's all I wanna say, and y'all have a great day.
Sir. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going into public discussion. We have, uh, let these requests go first, I have at three. Herb Shelton? Herb, you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, good morning, Herb Shelton, I'm from Tallahassee. I've seen a lot of marvelous things here today, and you'll probably never see me again, but I really felt a duty that, um, I wanted to talk to you about, the fracking issue. I encourage everyone in this room to take your phone out to Google that fracking kills babies. Um, I see that we have in God we trust, I, I don't think that it's wrong to say that I try to practice that I would do unto others as they would do to me. I try to practice that in my life, so I feel like it's important for me to, to bring this attention to your, um, awareness. When you Google that, fracking kills babies, you're gonna find a report from Vernal, Utah, that there was a midwife that's found that, that found that many children were dying in, under her, not necessarily under her watch, but in twenty thirteen, out of ten thousand people, ten, ten babies had died. And she started bringing this awareness to the community. Now, a lot of, um, the money comes from that industry, and so they labeled her as a troublemaker and everything else. Well, you know, uh, I also encourage everyone to do some more research about the fracking eliminating the home rule, like they did in Texas, and that's gonna strip you all of the ability to regulate that industry in your own backyard. Um, I don't think you're elected, your people elected you to have that stripped away from you. They gave you this trust and, um, yeah, and everything else. But anyway, they, victims of this industry have also suffered in, um, a settlement, gag agreements. This means that if they were, they had filed a lawsuit in Pennsylvania, there was a family, they had a children, they were ten, seven years old, the gag agreement reached down to the children. They said, if you speak about the effects of this industry that had damaged your property and so forth, then you will be in, you know, violation of this agreement. So, it's, it's a tremendous, uh, intimidating, uh, group. Also, they have used, and you can Google this yourselves, look at psychological operations. The industry has used anti-terrorist techniques against civilian populations who oppose them. Uh, sometimes they hire golf or contractors who were trained with these tactics. You can look it up yourself. I'm not an expert, but I listen to those who are. I, I'm just a civilian, I live in Tallahassee, but when I come to these, uh, um, when I come to this information, I, I have to share it with others, especially if you see a train wreck ahead, the bridge is out, I gotta say, look, get off. Anyway, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Herb was gonna mention that Franklin County will be passing a resolution to ban fracking on November third.
Right, I forgot to say that.
Ladies first, Ms. Barbara Doris, is that correct?
That's correct.
And Dave. That's Dave. Barbara and Dave, okay.
Thank you so much.
Give you a name right over here.
I'm sorry, um, it's Barbara Rutherford Doris, fifty-four, sixty, Cape San Blas Road, Cape San Blas, Florida.
Three minutes, dear.
All right. I've got a lot of information, I'll just have to read it very quickly, if that's all right. Um, I'd like to thank the board first for allowing this opportunity. Um, I, my statement is about, it's relative to the discussion of fracking in Gulf County. I'm urging you to protect our precious water resources by enacting a county-wide ban on fracking and other dangerous well stimulation techniques used in the oil and gas drilling. I am concerned about the widespread drinking water contamination, um, and the environmental devastation that could happen right here to our fragile ecosystem if fracking is allowed. Fracking accidents are occurring so often now, they've been called frac accidents, and are defined as accidents involving poisoned drinking water, polluted air, mysterious animal deaths, industrial disasters, and explosions that are related to the fracking process used by the oil and gas companies. A recent Associated Press report found more than twenty-one thousand spills from drilling oil and gas production states from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen. That resulted in over a hundred and eighty million gallons of toxic wastewater spilled. Fracking uses a wide range of chemicals, many of them are toxic, they cause cancer. In addition to other health threats, these toxins also enter drinking water supplies from leaks and spills through well blowouts and through the failure of disposal wells receiving fracking wastewater. Most industrial uses of water return it and recycle it, but with... Most industrial uses of water return it and recycle it, but with these... This water used in the fracking process, it is actually turned into wastewater, and it has to be disposed of. And it... That alone takes billions of gallons of water out of our system, out of our water supply. This is water we cannot afford, you know, to lose here, especially with the decrease in the flow from upstream where Georgia is hogging all the water, if you will. We already have a decreased flow, and we already have a high salinity, um, composition to all our water, even in Appalachia Cola, that's one of the reasons. We lack fresh water, and we lack, you know, the fresh minerals and things that oysters require, you know, and other aquatic life as well. So I think it would be too salty for many species to thrive on, especially with the decrease in the flow, and it will take water, it will take a lot of water. One of the estimates I have, a loss between 2 to 4 million gallons of water will be necessary to drill and crack the rock of just one well, depending on the basin and the formation of the shale. And that was according to a report on modern shale gas development in the United States. Um, I don't think we can afford that kind of water coming out of the Chipola.
Your time is...
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Dave Doris, 5460 Cape San Blas Road. First of all...
You have the floor.
I'm sorry.
You have the floor.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank this board for the opportunity to read my prepared statement regarding fracking in Gulf County. My wife and I are permanent residents in this county. It is my understanding that the seismic testing for fracking is expected to begin next month and continue through January, adjacent to the Chipola and Appalachia Cola rivers. This will have a devastating effect on our environment and our health. Many people have an image of the damage caused by fracking. Documentaries and videos have shown tap water catching on fire, and families experiencing headaches, dizziness, nausea, and other illnesses while living near these fracking operations. These images illustrate the damage that fracking does to the environment and our health. Until now, it's been difficult to comprehend the extent of the damage. Fracking wells can pollute the air and water of our town and neighborhoods. What you may ask is the magnitude of risk those wells have on our drinking water, and how are our beautiful landscapes damaged? Damage from fracking is far worse than we can imagine. Excuse me. Over the past decade, the oil and gas industry has used hydraulic fracturing to extract oil and gas from rock formations deep underground. Fracking has unleashed a frenzy of oil and gas drilling, posing severe threats to the environment and public health. Fracking has polluted both drinking water and surface waterways such as rivers, lakes, and streams by entering air waters through leaks and spills of fracking fluid, well blowouts, methane escapes, and other contaminants. Toxic substances in fracking chemicals and wastewater have been linked to several negative health effects, including cancer, endocrine, and neurological and immune system problems on humans. Fracking chemicals also affect our fish. In closing, I would like to urge you to oppose the seismic testings and all fracking operations countywide, to protect our drinking water, our environment, and most importantly, our health. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, anyone in the public have anything for the board?